Mayor staff is ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the roll to establish the quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here, thank you.
Councilmember Laloe is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier. Mayor Protem Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Jennings.
I am here.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
And Councilmember Shenier. Councilmember Shenier is on line.
I am on line and I am here. Sorry, I wasn't promoted.
Mayor Steinberg.
Just like high school.
I am here. Members, we have a quorum. Let us begin tonight. I'd ask Councilmember Shenier if you're, you're okay with it to do both the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance.
Happy to. If everyone will stand, we'll do the land acknowledgement to the original people of this land, the Nisam people, the Southern Maydo, Maidu Valley and Plains, Miwok, Patwin, Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognizing, recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing together, choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Hand over heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenier. I want to begin by welcoming back the members, the staff, and the public. I hope everybody got a well-deserved recess, at least for some of, some of the time. I know most people working hard, but I welcome everybody back. The second thing that I want to just say before we get to the consent calendar is to announce to the public that the city council will return to the city council chambers on August the 9th. And we have been and are continuing to do our very best to balance the fact that COVID continues and in some ways is increasing with the new variants. And at the same time, to, to, to operate in the way that people, at least over the years, except for the last two and a half years, have come to rightfully expect that they will be able to address us in person and that we as a body will, will meet in person as opposed to Zoom. The idea is to start a little bit slowly, to have the member, just the members, that first week on the 9th, still working it out with the city manager about whether or not the staff will be by Zoom or, or physically present. The next week, our intention is to have the public be allowed back into chambers and at the same time maintain the Zoom option for public testimony while taking all of the appropriate precautions, including requiring people to enter the chambers and wear a mask. And secondly, just to have half capacity within the chambers and to ensure that people are seated, you know, except for, say, members of households, every other, every other chair. And then we will, we will adopt and amend week to week, depending upon COVID itself and how these protocols are working. But I know we get this question a lot. And, you know, the city clerk and the city team have done a great job. And we've all done, I think, fine job, mostly the public in adapting to this new reality for the last two plus years. But it's time to, at least slowly, try to get back to where we were. And so I just wanted to start the meeting by announcing that that, that that is our intention. All right, members, let us begin with tonight's consent calendar. Are there any items that members would either like to be discussed separately and/or, and/or voted on separately? Let me.
Mayor, I would like, not for this week, but item 12 is passed for publication. I'd like to, to not be a consent item next week when it comes back to us.
Okay. Then that will come back in that way. Councilmember Vang.
Mayor, I'm not going to pull this item, but we'd like to comment on item 22.
Okay, I don't see any other members up now, so why don't you comment on item 22? And then we'll take public testimony and take a motion on the consent calendar.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Just really wanted to take this moment to say thank you to staff, especially Raymond, who is our appointee staff that works on everything parks in District 8. Just really want to thank him for his hard work on our various parks project in our district. Also want to give a shout out to Detroit Neighborhood Association, Margarita Chavez and Larry Lee, just for their steadfast advocacy. I'm really excited that we're going to be able to continue capital improvements to Susan B. Anthony Park in Detroit, which is a joint use property with the school district. And happy to transfer funds from our District 8 PIF funds to support this project. Just did want to follow up with the city manager on this item in particular. Incredibly excited about it, but I am a little bit concerned regarding the cost overrun for this project. And just want to make sure that we can address any unforeseen costs as we move forward on this project.
Councilmember Vang.
Absolutely. While we don't foresee the overruns happening, but if they do occur, we will work with the Parks and Yipsey Department to make sure that we make the project whole.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the consent calendar? Moved. Moved by Councilmember Shenier. Seconded, I heard Councilmember Harris. Okay, is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four hands raised. The first is.
Okay, let's hear, let's hear from the public, please.
The first is Barry Boyd.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all. I would just like to comment on item 22 on the consent calendar. As Councilmember My Vang had just spoke on, my thoughts are, as city manager Chen has just stated, if there is a cost overruns, if there are cost overruns on the, the Futsball and so forth, the new facility coming up there on, off of Detroit, would, they would be able to make it whole. With that said, if the ability to find additional monies or, and/or funding to make that project whole, my concern is then let's please leave the monies that were originally allocated to the Metta View Park restroom upgrades and add additional monies to that project so that the park that was upgraded could be completely upgraded, including the restrooms, as opposed to just the facility, the basketball court, playground, so forth. Let Metta View Park have its usable restroom and put forth the additional monies that staff has stated the hundred and, I believe, 153,000 would not be enough to do a new type of lock on the doors. So if money can be found for the other project on Detroit Boulevard, by all means, let's find the money to increase the need there to get the restrooms to standard and have equitable equality at Metta View Park as other parks around the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daphne.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Madam Clerk. I'd like to actually have council give more detail on items number 3, 7, 10, 12, 22, and 26. I did put those notations in public comment. A lot of them have to do with some contracts that are moving from like 70,000 up to 405,000, which bypasses or goes across the threshold of 250,000 on base contracts. I'm just, as a citizen, it concerns me when we have a 500% increase on something without any explanation to public, and I'd like to have more detail on that. The item that Barry just mentioned on the parks, we very rarely get money allocated in District 8. Now I'm in District 5. I'd like to not see funds being transferred out of that district. There are other needs within the district that we are looking towards, and I'm looking for those funds to actually be allocated to those needs. Things like our roads, which were destroyed on our G5 upgrades. We still have patches all the way through our neighborhoods and divots and holes, and we're never really on the allocation for road repair. So if you have other ways of reallocating those funds within the district for things of that nature, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. And I would like to get more detail on those items that I've mentioned. That's item 3, 7, 10, 12, 22, and 26. I'd like in-depth explanation.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is a phone number, 4366. So Mr. Davis.
Oh, yes. I'm calling about, anytime I see ARPA funding, I'm always monitoring that. I guess the numbers would be 6, 19, and 20. So it's ARPA funding. I'm studying ARPA funding because I don't see much ARPA funding going to Del Paso Heights. And I'd like to end by saying true leadership, Mayor, on having the city council return back to the chamber. It definitely looks ready to go. So I look forward to the city council returning to the chamber. And during that time, it would have been almost two and a half years, I believe, Minty and the other lady across from her should be able to go home for two and a half years and do their job from home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keon Bliss. And Mr. Bliss is the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Greetings, city council members. My name is Ken Bliss. I'm the vice chair for the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. And wanted to comment on item 12 around the ordinance of, around the ordinance that, around commissions and boards, just wanting to raise the concern around the limit, both, some of the items in there around preventing consecutive terms for city, or for chairs and vice chairs, as well as the prohibition of establishing standing committees and ad hocs. I appreciated the time that city clerk took to talk with our commissions about that and had some questions that come up around it when they, when it was mentioned that while this would eliminate standing committees and ad hoc committees, that we would still be allowed to establish working groups to basically, to continue to do our work, but not have to be constrained to the one-year term limit for those ad hoc committees, that ad hoc committees under the Brown Act are typically required. And while on paper, that would seem like it's like, you know, that would be more beneficial to our commission. And, you know, being that most of our work gets done within the ad hoc committees, these working groups aren't specified in this ordinance. And it also brings, like, also brings a lot of concerns that we're just not, or, you know, that we, it can be even less transparent than what the ad hoc committees typically require. As much as I appreciate the time, I really want to just emphasize that I would like to see this working group language that city clerk Mini Kupi had specified to us, writ, included in the ordinance, codified.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, just want to make sure that this, these working groups are codified in the ordinance and written under, and have, so that we can have written understanding.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, is there any response to the second caller? I just want to make sure she did ask some question. I'm not sure if it was specific enough for any of the staff to answer on the, on the items she raised. Maybe we can have the staff call the caller back tomorrow and make sure she gets some answers, please.
Yeah, we'll get the contact information from the clerk's office and then we'll contact her directly.
Okay, really appreciate it, Mr. City Manager. Okay, let's take, call the roll on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember.
And congratulations.
Councilmember Laloe.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, thank you. The consent calendar passes. Let's go. We have several public hearings. Let's begin with 23, delinquent utility service charge report. Who's presenting?
Ria.
I'm sorry?
I am, I apologize. I'm sorry. I was trying to turn on my microphone.
You're good.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Fadi Jaja. I'm the Building Services Manager with the Department of Utilities. I would like to read into record that the total amount to be levied as special assessment, as indicated in the staff report, has been reduced as a result of payment received. The total delinquency amount to be levied as a special assessment is $3,484,138.28. Exhibit A in the staff report has been revised to reflect these changes, and a copy is on file in the city clerk's office. I respectfully request the mayor and council to open and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Okay, very good. Is there any public testimony on the item?
Mayor, I show no hands raised to make public testimony on this item.
And I don't see any members, but I'll take a motion, please.
Here, all of you, and close the public hearing and move staff recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Yegi. I'm sorry if I pronounced that.
Jaja.
Jaja, thank you for your hard work here.
Thank you.
Your presentation, but that means that you were well-prepared and no questions. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, Councilmember Jennings, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jaja, just one quick, quick question. For any individual that wants to take care of this matter before we do the assessment, do they still have time to do so?
Well, unfortunately, like I said, it is, if, if there is like an urgent need, we will accommodate because we still have a couple of weeks before we send the special assessment list to the county. So if there is somebody willing to come to the office or give us a call, we'll be more than happy to help out.
Okay, and all the calls that are in progress now, same thing for them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so people still have a small amount of time in order to be able to cure the assessment before it goes on, on their, on their records.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, members. Thank you very much. That passes. Let's go to number 24, which is the Broadway Business Improvement District.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Ceni Macassini with the Finance Department. The item before you is a public hearing for the renewal of the Greater Broadway Property and Business Improvement District, which at this time, staff recommends opening the public hearing. Upon the close of the hearing, the city clerk's office and city staff will count the ballots and report back to the council as a consent item on July 26 with the tabulation results. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm happy to open and close the public hearing and move this item with many applause to the city staff, as well as Joan with the Broadway District for all they're doing.
And I will second. Very good. Let's call, any public testimony?
Mayor, I show no hands raised to make public comment on this item.
Okay, let's call the roll then.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. Thank you. That passes. Now let's move on to item 25, the Growers District. I understand there may be a consensus here, an agreement. Who's presenting? And then I'll let Councilmember Harris speak first because I know he's been working hard on this. Okay. Who's presenting?
Hi, Mayor. My name is Angel Anguiano with the Community Development Department. This item was previously continued from the June 28 city council meeting to allow for additional public outreach from the applicant. As a result of that outreach, supplemental material has been prepared and included as an attachment to the staff report. Before you this evening is a request for an ordinance amending, amending Title 17 of the Sacramento City Code to rezone three sites totaling 5.23 acres from the heavy commercial zone to the general commercial zone within the River District Special Planning District, a resolution adopting site planning design review for demolition of one building and alterations to two buildings, the construction of four mixed-use buildings with 525 dwelling units and 70,887 square feet of commercial space with deviations to building height and multi-unit open space standards within the C2 SPD zone, and an increased floor area ratio based on a significant community benefit consistent with general plan River District, SPD, and North 16th Street Historic District. And then, and a resolution for a tree permit to remove three city trees. The project went before the Preservation Commission on May 18 and Planning and Design Commission on June 9, and both forwarded recommendations of approval to the council. Included in the supplemental material, the applicant has completed additional discussions with major industrial employer located to the east of the project site. The discussions have been focused on the preparation of a noise and lighting assessment, preparation of a coordination plan related to potential work within the North B Street right away, and the phasing of construction. The draft resolution has been updated to clarify conditions of approval related to the noted items and reflect input received from the applicant and the major industrial employer. The applicant has confirmed their consent to the updated conditions of approval. So with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed project and recommends the city council approve the project this evening. The project applicant and architect are here this evening and would like to make a brief presentation. Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant and the architect briefly. Then again, I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Harris because he's been on point on this project. Applicant? Architect? Are you, are you having technology trouble? Better than financing trouble?
Mr. Anguiano, who's the applicant?
The applicant should be Ian Barth. Or the project architect should be Ron Verlakis, or architect, excuse me.
Bar, Mr. Verlakis, are you, are you on the Zoom?
I'm promoting Ian now. And who was the other person you'd like promoted?
Ron Verlakis.
Oh, Ron Verlakis. Okay, Mr. Barth and Mr. Verlakis, welcome. You're invited to make a brief, and I ask you, please, brief presentation on the, on the importance and the merits of the project.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Ian Barth. I'm with Bound Capital. And Bound Capital is a family-run development company that builds spaces that are resilient, sustainable, and enduring. Our Opportunity Zone Capital invests in underserved buildings and communities. In addition to investing in the greater Sacramento area for decades, we have recently completed two Opportunity Zone projects, improvement projects in downtown Sacramento along K Street. And we look forward to continuing our impact by creating a clean, safe, and thriving community on 16th Street at the Growers District. We are revitalizing the existing historic structures and making them economically relevant again through the addition of housing units to create an ecosystem for people to live, work, and shop. The Growers District design incorporates walkable and bikeable streets, green spaces to bring back trees, and envisions eclectic small business retail shops where producers can directly sell to consumers. We have assembled a talented local team, and we're proud to present the transformative Growers District project. And Ron Verlakis from Verlakis Growing Architects will share more on our vision.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'd like to share my screen if I could. I'm going to attempt that now. And hopefully you can see the Growers District cover sheet here. Is that?
We see it, Ron.
Great. All right, I'm going to run through about two or three minutes of slides to give you a visual introduction to what this is all about. I think it's a quite exciting change to the, the area just north of 16th Street or just on North 16th Street as you approach Pipe Works and the historic buildings that surround Pipe Works. Right here, you can see as we zoom in, the cottage housing you would first pass on your west Pipe Works and then what we call Site 200, the big actual growers market that is a historic place in Sacramento. All the way back to 1928, it was one of the first things you would see if you traveled out in that area. The big U shape that you see in the screen here, and then the two buildings across from it mostly incorporate the site of the, of the project in front of us. Quick view of what the, the scene looked like back then in the 1920s. It was a place central to, to food distribution in the Sacramento region from growers to the markets. And then an aerial view of it today, again, kind of showing you the scope of the work and the historic buildings that we are incorporating into the proposal. This gives you an aerial view of the, the massive amount of housing, over 500 units that we propose to infuse life into this new neighborhood, surrounded by commercial in the historic buildings, and really with a, with a preservation-first mindset. As you enter the area on North 16th, you, you see this today just past Pipe Works. And at the completion of the project, it would take on a character more like this, which embraces the historic buildings and brings significant housing, mixed uses, a very much embracing of, of a, of a community that's inclusive and connected. You can see looking across 16th Street now, the change, both old and new, together with a significant amount of new tree planting and canopy, two small parklets for the use of the public. One just on the outer corner at North C Street and Ahern, and then one within the, the big U shape of the Growers Buildings in the middle. A couple of quick images to finish with that show you sort of the character of places that we think are, are central to the success here, that we've been involved in most of. This is Ice Blocks. You might be familiar with. So that the industrial character of the new buildings connected to the old buildings is what we would be striving for. And an independent spirit to the retail and commercial inside, like you have at the wall. Township 9, something we designed some years ago, also picks up on that, that character. And then a building on our street that brings the old and new together in a fresh way that we think embodies what the Growers District would become eventually. And last slide, back to the, the street scene, you can see an energy here. We think with the quantity of housing, the mix of uses, the embrace of historic places, this can be something special in Sacramento. And with that, I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verlakis. I mean, I just got to tell you visually, it just looks unbelievable. So let me turn it over to Jeff Harris. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you might recall, when we first took office, I came to you and asked for 30,000 bucks to do a study of the River District to look at the potential for it to become somewhat like the Pearl District. And you agreed. We hired Rod Stevens. He did a survey of all the properties in the River District and produced a little 30-page book in color about a vision for what the River District could become. Well, that was a significant thing. It took a few years. It took the efforts of Ken Turtin, who I really. It took the efforts of Ken Turtin, who I really laud for his efforts in this regard. I, I wanna thank Florian and Ian Barth, because this is, this is a challenging project and it's risky. It's not a slam dunk, but they have a vision and it also, uh, utilizes the Opportunity Zone. So this is a tremendous project that will bring many dwelling units to the River District, but also a lot of commerce. And I believe will create a whole new day for the River District. So I'm extremely excited about the prospect of this moving forward. To me, this is like the Aggie Square of the River District, right adjacent downtown. It's a real redevelopment project that will have a significant impact on our downtown core. And, um, there's really an awful lot of good here. Uh, the seventy-one thousand feet of commercial use, you know, will be accessible to millennials at a reduced rate for most of the commercial space around the neighborhood. I think that it will engender a lot of new business and a lot of new entrepreneurs, which is really what this city is, is, is about and moving in that direction. Uh, when Bow and, when, when Ken Turtin brought Bow to the table, they asked me for a recommendation of an architect, and without blinking, I mentioned Ron Verlakis because of his work at Township Nine and because he has such a long track record of doing great things in Sacramento. And, uh, they, they hit us off, and here we are. I also have to thank Mark Groen, who works with Ron, uh, who did actually a lot of line and share of the design here. This is a tremendous project, but like any big project, you know, there are some rough edges. There are, there are people who have some objections, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a give-and-take process. So we do have a large industrial operator right adjacent to this project. And understandably, they raise concerns about how this project might affect their operations. The reason we continued this for two and a half weeks is because they needed time to work out some finer points, and, uh, they've done so, which I'm extremely happy about. Uh, you know, and so again, Ian and the Bow and team, I thank you very much. You made a lot of concessions, actually. And on the other side of the table, I want to thank, uh, some people from Blue Diamond. I want to thank Mallory Hayes and Alicia Rockwell for getting to yes. So this, this project with five hundred and twenty-five dwelling units, that's a very significant project. And it will help us, you know, to reach our goals for housing in the city. It'll, it'll work well with the River District, it'll work well with the rail yards. This is a tremendous project. So with all those people thanked, I would like to open and close the public hearing, move the staff recommendation with the supplemental material, which basically envelops the agreement that Bow and Blue Diamond came to. You know, another person that, that I should thank is John Danberg. He worked very hard on this project, he opened a lot of doors and nursed it through, as he is very capable of doing and has done for us in the city on numerous large projects. So John, thank you for your efforts, and, uh, thank everybody involved. I cannot wait till this breaks ground, and I can tell you with certainty that the River District Board, the P-Bid, are super excited about this project. So that being said, I open and close the public hearing, move the staff recommendation with the supplemental material.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, I want to hear from the public and then from the members. I just think, you know, you should be very proud. Uh, this is the best thirty thousand dollar public investment, uh, that, that, uh, I've ever seen. Because it starts with a vision and you, you led that, so thank you.
I appreciate that, Mayor, you know, that book, we brought it to Bow and Investments, presented it to them, and it ignited a spark, and look what it's turned into.
Terrific, uh, I hope Blue Diamond is on the, uh, i- is on the line here, uh, because I think it would be important here for them, they're a very, very important, uh, uh, part of our community. Uh, important business leader, important part of our, uh, our business community, our economic base here. They matter, um, and that they got to yes here, I think is really significant and important. Are they on the line? Madam Clerk?
Um, I don't see, who are you looking for, Mr. Mayor?
Either Alicia Rockwell or...
Or Mallory Hayes.
Or Mallory Hayes.
I see neither online.
Okay, well, I think Councilmember Harris summarized, uh, the agreement, uh, at least to some degree that was reached. And, uh, members of the public, how would they be able to access that, tho- those conditions that were added to?
They're, they're published, Mayor, they're, they're published as supplemental material on our agenda.
Okay, very good, that's just, I just wanted to clarify, clarify that for the record. Um, let's hear from any member of the public then, please.
Thank you, Mayor, I have seven hands to raise, the first is Devin Strecker. Devin Strecker?
Hi, this is Devin Strecker, I'm the Executive Director of the River District P-Bid. Uh, I'm, I'm very new, um, but this is a very exciting, transformational project, um, that we are very much in support of. It would bring much-needed residential and commercial space to the district, and it would be a positive catalyst for the entire River District. And for a successful neighborhood, you need to have residential units of all different prices. So this offers market unit, and many of them are affordable by design, and over seventy thousand square feet of retail space. So I just want to echo everything that Councilmember Harris said, and, um, voice our strong support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, our next speaker is Kevin Smith.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. My, my name's Kevin Smith, I'm the Senior Vice President for Twenty-Ninth Street Capital, the owners of Township Nine, and also a member of the River District Board. I'd like to echo what Devin and what Councilman Harris said about the board's support for this project and seeing it as transformational, and, uh, welcome Bow into the neighborhood. Um, you know, we see this as a rising tide lifts all boats, and a great project like this would just be a compliment to the transformation of the River District into the great extension of downtown that it really is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Giovanni Adelini. Giovanni, if you'll unmute. We'll go to the next person, Lisa Tremonte.
Hi, uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Lisa Tremonte, I am the Sacramento resident, I'm actually very against this project, in the sense of, yes, beautiful presentation, very beautiful. It does sound very amazing. The whole idea of the millennial space sounds great. Who's going to be building this project? I mean, from what I understand, this developer does not use union workers, therefore, can they guarantee that there is going to be local hires? Can they guarantee that there is going to be a prevailing wage paid to these tradespeople building this project? Will there be healthcare provided to them? With the people who are building this project, you can't even afford to live in the buildings that they're building, is where I have a problem. So until this developer can promise that they are going to provide and answer these questions of local hires, people in Sacramento, are they even gonna be able to work on this project, let us live there? So that is my huge, major concern, is beautiful project, don't get me wrong, but who's going to build it? And that is where my concern is, and those are the questions that we need to be asking for the people of Sacramento, who will be, who need work? Are we gonna have Sacramento residents building these Sacramento residents and also be able to live in this? That is an issue that I have an issue with, and that is an issue that I think you all should have an issue with as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, our next speaker is Greta Lassen.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Greta La Chin, and I'm the President of the River District Board. I was so pleased to hear today that there's been a breakthrough between the Growers District and Blue Diamond Growers. I want to thank all parties for working together and making it possible for this project to go forward. I also want to thank Councilmember Jeff Harris for having the vision years ago to pre- present something spectacular in this beautiful and unique historic district, and then working hard to keep the Growers District project on track. The Growers District will be transformational for the River District, and it'll be something special for Sacramento. So thank you to all involved who made this happen, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Charlene Maxwell. Charlene Maxwell, if you'll unmute.
Hello?
Please proceed, Charlene.
Hello? Hi, I couldn't hear you, I can't hear you clear.
Um, please proceed, it's your turn to present to the council.
Hi, um, this is, uh, Dance Art Production Outreach. Um, we have been doing a lot of, uh, community, I have been doing a lot of community outreach for the Ranch Pudovva area. Um, I have been talking to, um, the Board of Directors, um, and I am so excited for the future for the children and the residents here. I want to thank everybody for, um, their hard work, um, and the Renew project. I've talked to some of the residents, and they love the, the outcome of it. Um, the whole project was about the children, the community, um, where they live. They just needed a couple updates on it. We wanted the kids to thrive in our community through dance, through art, and that's what you guys did. I really want to thank you, the Board of Directors, for presenting the award to me on Saturday. I want to thank, um, the mayors and everybody that is involving, involved in this project. Awesome job, you guys, awesome, and to, and I look forward to the future.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Chris Palomo.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'd first like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union at Local Forty-Six here in Sacramento. We have reached out to the developer numerous times about this project with no response whatsoever, which leaves us to conclude that they don't care about the hard work and men and women of Sacramento, and will not be requiring the general contractor to pay a livable wage, be providing healthcare for the workers, which we all know is essential with these times and COVID-nineteen still going around, as well as not reinvesting back into the community of Sacramento by using local hire. As the council takes this project into consideration, I would like you to keep a few things in mind. First and foremost, that these local construction projects matter, but also the workers who build these projects, they matter more. Questions you should be asking yourself and asking the developer is why will they not be making a commitment to use local hire? Reinvestment back into the community is crucial. Also, why won't they make sure the contractor is gonna pay the workers the area standard wages and benefits? It's hard enough to make ends meet with the way inflation has been going, let alone afford to pay for your own healthcare on top of that. And lastly, will they, will there not be a requirement to use a state-certified apprenticeship program? The use of these programs helps invest into the education of the next generation, generation of workers. Although it may not be intended, by not having commitments or contract requirements on these projects just adds to the downward pressure on our community and the workers who build it. I do understand that we are in a housing crisis in California, and the building of these much-needed five-hundred units is essential. But as, but as we all know, we are also in a huge homeless crisis here in Sacramento. And when you have construction workers who are building these projects, living in their vehicle because they can't afford to live in the projects they're building because they're paid such a low wage, that's a problem in itself. And the home, homeless crisis is therefore not being fixed, and has to be becoming worse. It is a never-ending cycle, and we need to make a change and steps in the right direction. We have a responsibility to the workers and the community of Sacramento, and by allowing developers to choose bottom-feeding contractors to build these projects, we are doing a disservice to this community and pushing workers' wages and benefits back in time. We should expect better in our great city and show workers that they are a priority, and that Sacramento has a higher standard, uh, by saying no to Bow and Capital and the Growers District project. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
I just hope this council takes all things into consideration and does the right thing, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And the final speaker is Giovanni Adelini. Giovanni, if you'll unmute. Mayor, it appears I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, let me now turn it, thank you to the public, let me turn it over to the council members. Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Protem Getta.
Thank you, and, um, I really want to thank, um, Councilmember Harris and all the callers for adding context. For those of us who haven't been on the council for very long, to understand the long journey this project has taken is really helpful. Um, I agree, this is a catalytic-type project for, um, the River District, and really do want to echo the compliments to the development team and Blue Diamond, um, which is a constituent that goes across District Three and District Four lines. Um, I know I was in pretty good contact with Mallory and was really glad to see the resolution presented here tonight between them. But I do have a question for the development team, I think Ian's still on here, right? Oh, yep, there he is, hi Ian. Um, so can you clarify for me, are these gonna be market-rate or affordable units in your development?
So these, these will be market-rate, so this is an Opportunity Zone project, which has, um, di- uh, different incentives than affordable housing, uh, type developments. And, um, Opportunity Zones are located within the twentieth lowest percentile of, uh, of in, income, um, from, uh, the census data. And so this will be affordable, uh, just by nature of where it's located, but, uh, not, I guess, uh, technically affordable housing by, uh, legal definition.
Okay, do you have any estimate on what the entry rents will be?
We don't, construction pricing and rents have been very volatile recently.
Okay.
Yep.
That's very fair, well, and that relates to the second question, because I think, like, for me, when we do big zoning changes, I like to see, like, what the community benefit is going to be, um, you know, whether it's, I mean, the project itself is always a benefit, but you know, is it affordable housing, is there something else? So I think the carpenters bring up an important point around the contractor that will be hired for this project. Will they be doing local hire, will they offer healthcare? I mean, these are things that are sort of the floor in the trades industry, um, right now, and so is that something you care to comment on?
Sure, I can make a comment on that. So, um, we've done, uh, two Opportunity Zone projects on, on K Street, uh, using both union and non-uni- non-union labor, um, and many of them from within, uh, the Sacramento area. Uh, and in terms of community benefit, I think there's many on this project. So it's, it's applying much-needed housing, um, in an area that, that could use a lot of help. It supports the large investment that the city has made, uh, to secure the future of the area. Uh, it provides the retail and will activate, um, an area that is a food desert, and there are neighborhoods in, in that area. It adds trees a- in green space, and will make a, a bikeable and walkable, uh, area to promote, uh, other modes of transportation, because Sixteenth Street is kind of seen as a, a through, uh, through road, just through the area, so. Uh, and there's many others, so, um, yeah, we, we think it's quite a transformative project, and we think it provides a significant community benefit.
Okay, but do you want to comment specifically on the contractor question, local hire, healthcare?
Yeah, so, a contractor, so, so we're currently in entitlement phase. We still have to design the building after this, and then we would have to, um, bid it out and talk to numerous contractors. So a contractor has not been selected, uh, and the buildings have not yet been designed.
Okay, are you comfortable making a commitment to hiring a contractor that would do local hire, healthcare, and apprenticeship programs?
Uh, I would not make that commitment at this time, it's too early in the process.
All right, I will just say, I mean, for me, that's something that I feel is very important. Um, I think we're giving, um, a great benefit when it comes to increasing density and changing zoning on parcels like this. And I think having prevailing wage, local hire, um, healthcare, I mean, this is the floor. I mean, we did a long extension, extended conversation as a council about workforce development, and these are the jobs that we want to, to create in our region, and these projects tend to come in on time and under budget, as all the research shows, in addition to helping alleviate any conflicts on the job site, making sure that your project is delivered well and by skilled labor, and is as beautiful as you designed it to be, because folks are trained in, in doing that work. So, um, I feel really a lot more comfortable with this if you were prepared to make some sort of commitment to exploring this with the carpenters or any other union.
I, I appreciate your comments, um, just because we're not making a commitment doesn't mean that that won't happen. Um, again, we're very early in the process, and, uh, I'd also like to remind you, this is all privately funded.
Including the Opportunity Zone incentives?
Yeah, those are all, uh, so, so the in- the incentives are a tax incentive, but it's all private capital, yes.
Yeah, but it's through the federal program for the Opportunity Zone, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, those are my comments, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Getta?
Yeah, thank you, uh, I also had, uh, concerns here about, uh, uh, either a lack of commitment or, or a willingness to communicate about the, uh, local hire issue. So Ian, I mean, I, I, maybe I misheard, but, um, um, have you, as, it sounds like the, you had the carpenters or other local, um, uh, trades reach out to you, and, uh, and there hasn't been a return back, am I, did I misunderstand that? Or are you willing to respond back to, um, you know, the concern about local hire, making sure that we're using contractors that have a pre-approved apprenticeship and are providing healthcare? I mean, for me, local hire is important, I mean, at the end of the day, every aspect of this, in, uh, in, increasing our local, uh, workers' wages is a multiple effect. It helps maintain also our small businesses here afloat. So is, is that a, uh, is that what I'm hearing, that, that you haven't responded back to the inquiries or the requests?
I'll, I'll look into the, the inquiries and, and why those weren't responded to, but, uh, yes, those... I'll look into the inquiries and why those weren't responded to, but yes, that's correct. Again, we intend to use local hire when possible. There's many different trades and we have done other projects and used significantly majority local hire and we intend to do the same.
And in your past projects that you have used, say, union labor or skilled labor, you know, it seems to me that you're not adverse to that, but you don't know whether you've responded to them.
Right, it's usually, so the general contractor is the one that subs it out. We hire a general contractor, the general contractor then hires the various trades.
Okay. Well, will you commit to responding back to the commenters who commented during public session today?
Yes, I recorded the names. I got, let's.
We'd be happy to put you in touch with them directly, Ian.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think I have them correctly, but if you had their contact info, that'd be great.
And I think the clerk has their contact information from calling in. Madam Clerk, did you collect their information?
Councilmember, what information did you need?
Of the callers who called in regarding this item?
The representatives of the carpenters union. We'll make sure that contact is made. I think that'll be fine and I'm hearing a commitment. Mr. Barth and his team will sit down with them and I think that's a good start. Okay?
Correct. I have names, but Zoom does not collect the contact information.
We'll take, Councilmember Valenzuela and Getta's office will make sure that those contacts are made, okay? Councilmember Laloie?
Councilmember Harris, mega congratulations on a phenomenal project that brings everything together. Affordable market rate and more importantly, the businesses that will create jobs for the residents. And on top of that, my question is, I know that the affordable housing projects or low-income housing, they don't pay into like park fees or what have you. Does this project fall into the same category considering it's in a promised zone?
Opportunity zone.
Oh, I mean, opportunities, I'm sorry. Are they still obligated to pay the park fees and impact fees or they're waived as well?
Councilman Lilly, this is Tom Pace, Director.
Hey, how are you, Tom?
Very good, thank you. This project is not a deed-restricted low-income housing development, as I understand it, and therefore would not be eligible for the $0 fee rate. So they would pay the full fees applicable to the project.
So you'll have my 100% support on this project again. Congrats. And my only, first of all, congratulations to the developer. It's always great when you get a developer that's also very intrigued about the community and what they can do to help and make the community go forward. As far as the carpenters goes, I do agree, we have a lot of residents within my district, Councilmember Harris, and even your own district that are phenomenal subs. So I know that from where you're sitting, you'll take those into consideration, at least identify these sources within our districts that could potentially also provide additional jobs for the residents of our district. So again, congratulations, Councilmember, on this wonderful project.
Thank you very much. Let me turn to Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. I just want to also say thank you to our city staff for working so hard on the project. I know they've been working on this one for a long time and thank Blue Diamond and others who were, you know, instrumental in having important conversations to move the project forward. Sorry, I'm turning off my video because I think it's glitching a little bit there. But Councilmember Harris, also just big congratulations to you. It's a really big deal. Those renderings are no, no small improvement. Those are incredible changes to an area. I've been on this council for 12 years. That has been a focus of this mayor and the last, to really seek investment and particularly housing in that region and really want to make sure that these investors that are on this call today feel the love and appreciation from this council. Always in Sacramento, there's going to be a concern about making sure people are paid fairly and treated fairly and get good healthcare and have high-wage jobs. That's just who we are, bit our nature. So don't take it personally. It's just who we are. We really would love to see, try to work with folks and do the best you can, but also want you to walk away knowing how grateful we are that you've chosen Sacramento and that you've chosen to invest here. They're beautiful renderings. It's a wonderful project. Thrilled to have you. Congratulations, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to make a comment, then I'll let Councilmember Harris make the last comment and close this out here. Couple of things. You know, we want everything all at once and that's, that's good. We're always striving to do everything, but we do have a specific policy around project labor agreements that that says when the city makes an investment over a certain amount of money, there are certain requirements that come with that. We're in the midst of devising a community benefits ordinance based off the Aggie Square experience that tends, that would do similar things. In this instance, it is privately funded, although there are significant federal tax incentives through the opportunity zones. I grant you that. And I just hope, you know, yeah, that, Mr. Barth, that you sit down with the carpenters and, you know, try to work collaboratively. That's what we ask here. And that would be a good thing, but I don't want to lose the forest through the trees here on why this is so significant. For all the years of my mayorship, and I think this goes even farther back to when I was on the city council 30 years ago, the River District has rightfully, rightfully complained that the city has not done enough and the county has not done enough to actually implement a fair share policy when it comes to health and human services and social services. And they're right. And so when there is an opportunity to invest in, in a way that Councilmember Harris and the developers have brought forward here to build 530 units of quality housing, this is a no-brainer to me because this part of town not only needs, but it deserves the investment. If we're going to be serious about fair share, we not only need to place the health and human services and social service facilities in a fair way throughout the community, we have to do the other side of it, which is to make sure that we're purposefully enabling investment in the parts of town that need, that need some help here. So this is just fantastic to me. And, and you know, the Blue Diamond came along, it's really important to you. They're very important to us, but it, you know, it would have been not good otherwise, but the fact that everyone's together on this thing, let's go forward and let's help the River District and help the downtown of Sacramento build more housing and, and more economic revitalization. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate those comments quite a lot. Look, when you take the Growers District and Mirasol Village Township 9, the state projects, our new Parklet Alchemist project, the River District is on a roll. It is finally going to, you know, come out of the chrysalis and be the beautiful butterfly that it will be. And if you drive through the River District, you will see a lot of murals with a butterfly theme and I think it's appropriate. Again, I want to thank Bound Investments. This is not a project without significant risk. It's a tough one to build in a tough spot. The infrastructure is difficult to work with. They are offering a lot to this city, in my opinion. They have also a track record here in Sacramento. They are no strangers to union labor. Look, the way I see it is this, as the mayor pointed out, we do have a citywide PLA. This project is not constrained by that, but look, I've been a carpenter and a builder my entire life. I've worked with union people. I've worked with non-union people. And I have worked with quality tradesmen on both sides of that equation. Everybody deserves a job. I'm a big fan of local hire and I believe that Bound will take a really hard look at that and I will certainly encourage them to. We always want to keep our tradespeople working here in Sacramento and keep the money local. Anyway, that being said, I just want to thank, again, Blue Diamond and Bound Construction for reaching a collaborative agreement. This is going to be a tremendous build-out and I can't wait to break ground. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's call the roll, please.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Harris, but I did not catch the second.
I'll second it.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, and great job, Jeff Harris.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, unanimous. Congratulations. It's terrific. Okay, members, let's move now to the discussion calendar. We have two items. This one's listed for 15 minutes. Somehow I think it might take a little bit longer. And that is the placement of a Sacramento Children and Youth Health and Safety Act on the ballot. Let me describe how I'd like to proceed here. We're going to have Councilmember Shenier, of course, who has been a longtime leader on these efforts, start the presentation, then turn it over to Councilmember Vang, who's also led in big ways in this field. Then we're, then going to turn it over to Sacramento Kids First. Monica Ruiz-Mares is going to present and then I'm going to wrap up the presentation. Then we are going to hear from members of the public and then, of course, we're going to have a full debate and discussion among the members of the city council. If there's a proper motion, we will, we will consider that motion. So I begin with Councilmember Jay Shenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I'm not going to be very long right now for two reasons. One is, most of you have heard me talking about this for about a decade. So if you don't know how I feel and why I think this is important, it's not going to happen. And the other is, we have a, we have a number of young people who are going to speak, who I think are much more articulate and are those who are most impacted by what's going to happen. And we really want to hear their thoughts about this. So let me say a couple of things. One is, we know what young people need to be successful. There's 30 years of research in the youth development field. We know that young people need safe places to be. We know that they need positive relationships with adults. We know that they need a voice in what happens around them. We know that they need to be engaged in their lives. When, when those assets don't happen for a young person, chances are they're not going to do well. And in many, many cases, get on the wrong pathway in their lives. And then we're talking about intervention. We're talking about police. We're talking about all kinds of challenges, mental health issues. If we don't get to our young people early and provide what they, what many of them are not getting provided at the home, unfortunately, then the challenge becomes greater for us to be a great city. You know, lots of people say, kids are our future. Kids are our future. There's no question about that, but they're also our present. And we need to realize that. And I've been in many, many circumstances where people did not appreciate the value that young people bring to the equation, to the discussion. And then once it happens, they're amazed. And I've always said, for example, with our Summer at City Hall program, we'll know we're really successful when these young people come and we're not surprised at how articulate their presentations are. So the challenge is that when we don't have ongoing funding for our programs, whether they're city programs or community-based organizations running programs who know their communities and know the needs of their young people, it makes it very, very difficult getting a one-year grant or a two-year grant and then having to go through the process again when you haven't really even been able to get your program up and running to the specific level that you want it. But then you're scrounging for money without ongoing funding. It gets difficult to focus on the important piece and the important piece, again, is supplying those assets that young people need to be successful. What this initiative does is it provides that ongoing funding. It provides that guarantee in a very small amount, when you talk about our overall, overall city budget. But it provides that guarantee that programs that young people need, that they're using, can continue. We absolutely need to have metrics and transparency about all that. I think this, I think this initiative provides all that and that will be gone through from some of our speakers who are coming. But, but we need to, at the, at the end of the day, understand that if we want to be a great city, we need to have great young people who have the opportunity to be successful. And once they're successful, we're successful. So with that, I'm going to hope that all of our colleagues feel this way and see it. We have great young people and great programs in the city and we need to do for them. I have a friend who ran after-school programs most of his life and he said, a great after-school program is what I am able to provide for my own child. I am incredibly lucky in that sense, but every young person needs and deserves the opportunity. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Councilwoman Myveng.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenier. First, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to SAC Kids First for leading this important initiative. And you'll hear shortly from Monica. I know they've been on the ground for years, really fighting for this. And I also want to take this moment to thank Councilmember Jay Shenier, who's been a champion for our young people in this city. I thank you so much, Jay, just for your steadfast years of advocacy before I even came on the council. I'm really excited tonight, really about this opportunity to put this initiative on the November ballot. An initiative that I really believe can truly help put Sacramento Kids First by guaranteeing a set amount of allocation for our young people in the city. I just want to share a little background. As a community organizer, this is really our community's third attempt at this. You know, as a young community organizer in South Sacramento, before I was elected, I actually worked alongside numerous organizations to push for Measure Y for funding for our young people. And then in 2020, as a candidate and as a school board member, I joined SAC Kids First Coalition again as we gather signatures to put another measure on the ballot. And now as the councilwoman, I want to make sure that Sacramento kids have the resources to grow and to help the adults and I want them to reach their full potential. Also, just given the rise of cannabis revenue in our unrestricted funds and the harm that we've seen on our youth most impacted by poverty, I really believe that this initiative is our call to action to ensure that we can invest and put our kids first. We also know that we've been in this pandemic for about two years now and the pandemic itself has really widened inequities among our communities, especially our most disadvantaged youth, our youth in the city and our homeless youth. And so this ballot is really our chance to ensure our young people's success. For me, at the end of the day, this measure will help to fund services to help prevent young people from becoming physically homeless and really just keeping our babies, our youth, healthy and safe. As you heard from Councilmember Shenier, you know, young people, they need consistency and we know that one-time funding can't provide this for city services and community services. And you all probably have heard from young people throughout our city. They have actually demanded us as a council to prioritize them consistently. And I really believe that we got to do our part with our votes to give them and the voters a chance. So tonight, I'm really asking my colleagues to give our youth, who's been organizing on the ground for years, give them a chance at this. I'm asking my colleagues again to give the voters a chance to vote on this measure. And with that, I like to move this item and hand over the virtual mic to Monica and our presenter.
No, mine?
Uh huh.
Sorry, I was going to present. Oh, it was Monica then, my, I apologize.
All good, Mayor.
I was last. You're good. And Mayor, I'm going to second that motion.
Thanks. I like to move the item and then hand over the virtual mic to Monica and our presenter, who will share more about the measure. Thank you.
And I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenier and Councilmember Vang. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's really an honor to be here with you all. As a daughter of immigrants, as a Sacramento native of the Mettaview community, and honestly, as the coordinator of SAC Kids First, we are the region's largest coalition with we are the region's largest coalition with thirty-five organizations and two thousand members that advocates for young people. And tonight, we're here to ask you to vote yes to place our measure on the November ballot for the voters to decide. So I'm gonna share my screen now because I have created some presentation slides for you all to see. And can you see that?
Not yet. There you go.
Alright, there we go. Alright, and then I have some folks from our coalition who are presenting with me as well, and they will introduce themselves. But first off, I want to start our conversation by talking about our values, and we hope that these are values that the city also shares with us. As a coalition, we value empowering young people. We know that investing in children and youth means we are building strong leaders of tomorrow, but also, as Councilmember Shanir mentioned, leaders of today. We value prevention as a coalition, and to paraphrase the quote of Frederick Douglass, we know it is way easier and way better to build stronger children than to repair broken adults or men. Prevention work requires stable and consistent and long-term funding. How is it that we are able to see like, long-term impacts of our dollars if we don't invest them in prevention? We also value equity, investing in kids and youth, including our most vulnerable, which, as Councilmember My mentioned, our homeless youth, our foster youth, and I would add to that indigenous youth, black youth, Southeast Asian youth, LGBTQ youth, and disabled youth, who all deserve to be seen, heard, and prioritized. As a coalition, we value equity, and we truly believe that programs need sustainable funds, not just one-time funds, to grow and have a greater impact. You know, with the cuts to funding that we saw for the youth pop-up programs, we think that this just highlights the urgent need for this long-term and consistent funding stream. As a coalition, we also value accountability and evaluation. We believe in metrics. We believe in data analysis and using our city dollars strategically. That is why we wrote into the measure a section on investing in the city's infrastructure to make sure we're supporting the goals of this measure moving forward. We also highly value transparency, and later on, my colleagues will talk a little bit more about how that is embedded into the measure itself. I'm gonna pass the mic over to Anna to introduce herself and get us going with the presentation.
Thank you, Monica. Hello, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, councilmembers, and members of the community that are listening in. Thank you all just for allowing to share space with you all today. My name is Anna Alcolo, and I currently serve as the Sacramento Youth Alliance Program Director for the nonprofit Alliance for Education Solutions. I'm also a proud, long-time-standing member of the SAC Kids First Coalition, and today I am tasked with sharing the goals of this initiative. But before that, I'd like to just share a little bit more about myself and why I personally believe in investing in children and youth services. So I was born and raised here in the Sacramento area, specifically in District Two's Del Paso Heights. I personally believe wholeheartedly in investing in youth and children's services because I myself greatly benefited from these programs offered by the city, such as Youth at City Council. As a sixteen, seventeen-year-old, first-generation Tongan American young woman growing up here in Sacramento, I personally felt like my voice as a young person did not matter at all, especially within spaces like city council chambers. I struggled mentally, oftentimes physically, financially, and it was because of programs like Youth at City Council, where I was given that opportunity to experience new hopes, experience new opportunities, find my confidence, find my voice, and really started to believe in myself as a young person. Most importantly, I felt like I belonged here in Sacramento, which in the long run, honestly, really prevented me from getting into trouble and also helped me break generational curses and become the first in my family to graduate from college. And so this children's fund measure that we are here to present on today is set out to do exactly that for all of our children and youth of Sacramento. Because we know that not every young person gets that opportunity to experience programs like that because of the many barriers that stand in the way, the lack of funding, turnaround rates within youth-serving organizations, and so many other barriers that stand in the way. And so with that, we do have a couple of goals of this initiative that are as follows. One, to support the mental health and emotional wellness of children and youth. Two, to prevent and reduce youth homelessness among children and youth, including youth transitioning out of foster care. Three, to prevent and reduce youth substance abuse. Four, to prevent and reduce youth violence, and last but not least, to support the healthy development of young children ages zero to five years old. And so with the goals of this measure, we hope that young people just like me, who struggle mentally, physically, emotionally, financially, or all of the above, that are not just able to be out here in Sacramento surviving, but they're able to thrive, become the best versions of themselves, and really bring it back full circle, helping the city of Sacramento become a better city in the long run, similar to how me and a lot of my other colleagues in the SAC Kids First Coalition are doing right now for our children and youth. And so lastly, one thing that we love to say with our young folks is that we don't just talk about it, we be about it. And later on in this presentation, you all will hear more about the implementation process, points on transparency, accountability. But for now, go ahead and pass it on back to Monica, who will go over a few more details of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And yeah, I I know that, you know, Anna's story is is unique to her, and it's, you know, not unique to Sacramento. There are many children in Sacramento who are being born and raised in immigrant families that are struggling mentally, financially, all of the above, and this fund, we believe, will really support and fill in those gaps in services. So just to go over a little bit more details of the measure, the measure requires the city to invest in equivalent of forty percent of the revenue that is generated by the local cannabis tax. The measure does not increase taxes, neither on the consumer nor on the businesses. The measure generates roughly about ten million dollars in new investments in its first year. And just as we use the tobacco tax to support tobacco prevention and health services, we're asking that the city use part of the cannabis revenues to fund youth substance abuse prevention, mental health, and supports for homeless and foster youth. I'm gonna pass it back to Anna so we can get into the transparency and metrics.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So yes, as we previously mentioned in our conversation about values, goals, this measure truly does value transparency and accountability, as well as understanding the metric system that will be used to analyze these invested funds. And so a few points that we'd like to make known for the council and the public to know are, once approved by the voters, the city will establish an advisory, planning, and oversight commission that will also partner and work with the Sacramento Youth Commission to develop a five-year strategic plan and process to evaluate the impact of these investments. So those two entities will work thoroughly together to be able to make sure that the funds are being put into the right hands and that everything is being transparent in being invest in these investments. And because we also do value equity within this initiative, we hope that the plan will also prioritize children and youth most impacted by poverty, violence, and trauma. Another point we'd like to make known is that the city may also use these funds to expand on existing programs and/or to create new programs. Nonprofits and other public agencies will also be eligible for this funding, as well as parts of the funds will also go to supporting the city's infrastructure so that the city can intentionally and internally build that capacity to be able to manage the funds as well as execute the goals that we had mentioned earlier. Ultimately, the city council will be the determining factor that makes the decisions about how these funds are allocated on an annual basis. And so as we previously mentioned, these are just a few of the the points that we wanted to make on transparency, understanding the metrics and analysis of this measure. And so now, go ahead and pass it on over to Dr. Lena C. Vanderlist, who will introduce herself and help everyone just understand a little bit more about the medical world, youth substance abuse prevention work, and mental health. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today. My name's Dr. Lena Vanderlist, and I'm a general pediatrician, and I live and work here in the city of Sacramento. I'm also the Sacramento Valley Representative for the American Academy of Pediatrics, Chapter One. Our chapter represents forty-eight counties in Northern and Central California, and our mission is to promote optimal health and development of children and adolescents in our service area while partnering with their families and our communities. I'm so excited to be here today, representing our chapter and strong support of placing this measure on the November ballot to establish the Sacramento Children's Fund. As a pediatrician, I really get to see the effects of cannabis on kids daily in my practice. Many teens I see admit to using marijuana in an effort to help with their mental health. They tell me it helps lessen their anxiety, or it helps them fall asleep at night, or it grants them temporary respite from their depression or their troubled home lives. So as part of these conversations with them, I end up spending a lot of time educating my adolescent patients on what the science really tells us about the impacts of this drug on the developing brain. I tell them that data shows us that marijuana can actually worsen existing mental health issues and increases the risk of psychotic disorders such as schizophrenia in teenagers who are at risk. We know that frequent marijuana use in adolescents can lead to altered brain development, addiction, and cognitive impairment, especially when it comes to what we call executive functioning, which is a really key component in having teens plan out for their future. We also know that there's a strong correlation between early use of cannabis and increased risk of dropping out of high school. The short-term effects of cannabis use can alter short-term memory and impair motor coordination, putting teenagers at risk for motor vehicle accidents and other injuries. So given that California citizens have already chosen to legalize cannabis for responsible recreational adult use, it's our job as community members to make sure that this decision does not negatively impact our young people. So just as the tobacco tax revenue is used to support tobacco prevention and health services, establishing this children's fund with the tax revenue from cannabis sales in our city will help mitigate these negative effects that I just discussed. What I love most about being a pediatrician, and what we've talked about already today, is that young people are extremely resilient. And every day, I have the opportunity in the office to engage in prevention. With this fund, we could continue to do just that and more. With that, we're gonna increase opportunities and funding to support mental health needs, create programs and mentorship to keep adolescents in school, off the streets, and reduce the likelihood of gang involvement and violence. So many of the teens that I see in my office who have never tried cannabis say that the reason that they've abstained from doing this is because they have some sort of extrinsic motivator. For many, it's participation in a sports team or an extracurricular hobby. For others, it's like a job prospect or a college prospect. Through these funds, I hope that we can provide all kids with the motivation to become the best versions of themselves and see these reasons to abstain from getting involved in substance use. I look forward to partnering with all of you to give Sacramento Kids the best opportunity to thrive in our communities, and I really urge you to vote yes on this proposal to place the children's fund on the ballot. Thank you.
And with that, council members, on behalf of SAC Kids First, our thirty-five organizational partners, our two thousand members, we ask that you please vote yes to place this no-tax increase measure on the November twenty twenty-two ballot for the voters to decide. As Anna mentioned, as Dr. Lena mentioned, we want, need, and deserve a children's fund in the city of Sacramento now. That concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions from the public or the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Let me make some opening comments as part of the presentation, and then we'll hear from the public, and then we'll turn it over to the council for debate or discussion. I I want to thank you and all the members, leaders and members of SAC Kids First. I'm gonna talk about you in just a moment. I obviously want to thank Councilmembers Shanir and Vang for vision and for the hard work over these last number of months. I've been privileged to be a part of your circle here, and I know that I reluctantly did not support the last measure, in part because it did not include what this measure includes. Namely, that while we will take all of the appropriate input from the commission and from the community that ultimately the elected officials, the city council, must make the decisions on the expenditure of public resources, and that is now clearly in this measure. But I just want to use my moment to step back for a moment and talk about SAC Kids First and why it is so important that they are really in the lead on this measure. Because some may look at this, and I'm sure we'll talk about this tonight, as a as a measure to increase youth programming and youth investments, and of course, it is that. But it's about so much more. It's also about power. It really is about power, because there are a lot of powerful people in our city, and I would include us, those of us who get to hold public office. A lot of stakeholders have power. We have a lot of things written into our city charter that, you know, provide a leg up for stakeholders, and 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 that's good in many respects because we value what they do. The question tonight, and the question before the voters in November, is whether or not we are willing to give some real power to young people and real power and voice to their needs. Because without power, you don't, this doesn't have to be an argument. All you have to look at is the history. Because without power, young people too often get the short end of the stick. I talked about this in my State of the City address. During the last recession, police and fire were cut eight and a half percent. And by the way, those were real and painful cuts. And I've supported the police and fire budgets. I look forward to continuing to do so because we value public safety as it's been traditionally defined, but during that same period, parks was cut forty percent, summer camps, youth programming was cut sixty-seven percent. That's not right, and that's not fair. And this measure would give young people and their agenda and their needs, real power. For without that power in the city charter, you are left to good hearts, goodwill, best efforts. But we see what happens when, especially when times really get difficult. And that can't happen again, especially in light of what we are seeing in our community in real time. And especially with what we've seen around COVID and its impact on young people. I dedicated my life to the mental health movement. And oh my, finally, the issue is having its day. And in a way, I'm happy, and in a way, I'm really sad about it, because it's having its day for a very painful reason. More teen suicides, more young people suffering who who've lost out on years of their of their lives interacting with their peers. And we need to attend to that. We can't do it all as a city. But this is a statement that not only that we value young people, but we believe we should grant them real power, because that's what makes a difference in our society and in our city and the way we make decisions. Let me turn it over to the public, and then we will hear from members of the city council. Madam Clerk, how many witnesses do we have?
Mr. Mayor, you currently have sixteen hands raised to make comment on this item.
Yeah, okay, let's 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 hear from public.
The first is Carmen Martinez.
Hello, good evening, everyone, city council members. My name is Corin Martinez. I live in D six. I'm also a teacher, and I work with students in District Six. And I'd just like to say, throughout this past year, teaching back in person after distance learning, student mental health needs have increased drastically. Almost every single student in my class has expressed having experienced anxiety or depression at some point this year. And this has manifested in many ways, including more fights, suicide, drug abuse, and a lot more issues. And students in our community really need support for their mental health needs in and beyond our schools in order to prevent crisis and emergencies. So that is why I'm asking that you please vote yes to put this measure on the ballot. Thank you.
Next speaker is Leo Hugh. Leo?
Uh, sorry, one second. Okay. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Leo Su, and I live in District Five. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of the proposal for Sacramento Children's Fund. Having spent my entire life in Sacramento, I know that the city makes considerable investments in supporting its youth. But when a city's communities change, the city must change with them. For example, during COVID-nineteen, awareness of mental health complications increased, especially among youth. Many became willing to share their struggles with their mental health, but with this openness came an increased demand for support. But unfortunately, not everyone is able to receive the care they require. My best friend has to pay extremely high fees to access therapy, and my family and I had an extremely hard time finding a therapist to fit my younger brother's needs. As a COVID-nineteen pandemic rages on, this problem continues to expediate itself. A one-time investment will not serve to combat this problem, nor will it sufficiently aid in combating the multitude of problems that face youth today, such as violence, substance abuse, and homelessness. The only plausible way to continue to improve the lives of youth in Sacramento is to set aside a yearly fund for youth programs through Sacramento Children's Fund. Tonight, I am urging you to change with your community and vote yes on this proposal so that it may be placed on the November twenty-twenty-two ballot. Thank you for your consideration.
District Five Youth Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Johan Cardenas.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Johan Cardenas, and I live in District Eight. I'm calling today on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of the proposal for Sacramento's Children's Fund. As a young man of color who grew up in Sacramento, I personally know many of the challenges our young people have to go through. Many of these challenges include health disparities, community and home violence, increasing mental health challenges, trauma, homelessness, and sometimes the lack of positive figures in their lives, which in some instances can end up pushing them into negative activities such as gangs, drugs, and even end up in prison. We need to invest and create more equitable alternatives to support our young people. I was very fortunate to find mentors in my life who motivated me to go to college and become an advocate. However, not many young people are as fortunate. Our systems are shaped in a way that young people are likely to go back and continue doing the same harmful activities. However, if we invest in equitable alternatives and programs that support our young people, we can help them and our communities flourish. I ask that you please vote yes on the proposal tonight so that this measure is placed on the November ballot for our community to vote and together help the youth of Sacramento have a better present and future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Andrew Avila.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Andrew Avila, calling on behalf of Improve Your Tomorrow and an educational nonprofit serving young men of color in Sacramento County. And I'm proud to share that IYT fully supports the SAC Kids First proposal for a children's fund. We are an organization that serves young men of color of all backgrounds, especially those who are low income, who are under-invested in, and who are marginalized. We strongly urge you to put this measure on the November twenty-twenty-two ballot and let the voters choose to invest in the well-being of our children and in the future of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maki.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Maki. I am with Mong Innovating Politics, also known as HIP, and also with SAC Kids First, and I reside in District Four. Firstly, I want to thank Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Vang, and Chenier and the SAC Kids First Coalition for bringing up this initiative to the table. As someone who has been working with youth for over a decade, now it's more crucial than ever for us all as a community to care about our youth and to talk about our youth and to support our youth. Homelessness is violence. Homelessness is a state, regional, and local crisis. And money generated by this measure will help the most vulnerable and marginalized children and teens who are living on the streets. We are all responsible for the growth of our community and for the wellness of our community, and this means putting our youth first. I'm asking my council member, Councilmember Valenzuela, and for all council members to vote yes for this measure to be on the November ballot for the community to vote on.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Catherine Muah.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, good evening to Mayor Steinberg and all the city council members. My name is Catherine Muah. I'm with Mong Innovating Politics, also known as HIP, and I reside in District Seven. I would like to thank Mayor Steinberg, City Councilmember Vang, and Chenier and the SAC Kids First Coalition for this initiative. I am a youth, and I used to work at the McDonald's on Freeport across from McClatchy High School. And every single school day for up to two hours, we would have lots of youth show up because they did not have any after-school activities and there were no programs for them. They resorted to hanging out at a McDonald's and occasionally incited violence within each other. Children need a safe and supervised space that is for them. They need to be able to access equitable resources that will allow them to develop positively. It is why I am urging Councilmember Jennings, as well as all city council members, to vote yes to put this member on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daphne.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am glad to see that we are delegating funds specifically to youth. What I'd like to see, however, is that those funds are attached to things like the one percent tax against millionaires, the hotel tax, the sales tax, and the gas tax, which are consistent use activities. Tobacco, cannabis, alcohol, and guns need users. And those users are generally targeted towards our youth, and they are negative impact. If you truly want to give funding to the youth, tie the police to the tobacco, cannabis, alcohol, and guns, and tie the children to the taxes that are actually going to be viable throughout the ongoing years. I appreciate the testimony from Dr. Lena. She gave you some impact on how cannabis impacts youth. It will also impact adults in the same manner. I also would like to see the city to do a review, a revocation, and an audit process on tobacco, cannabis, alcohol, and gun businesses. Living in District Eight, now District Five after redistricting, I'm noticing an increase in tobacco, cannabis, alcohol, and gun businesses within our neighborhoods. And I'm noticing a lot of total businesses leaving our neighborhoods. So I am not opposed to this entering the ballot measure, but I'd like to see it shifted where the children are leaning more towards mentorship, entrepreneurship, employment, education, career, and trades, and then have the cannabis, tobacco, alcohol, and guns tied more towards ATF, DEA, and the policing. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Callie Lloyd.
Hi, my name is Callie Lloyd. I'm a leader with the Village of Kids, and I'm fourteen years old. I am speaking on the behalf of myself and on the behalf of Oni Bas, who was unable to attend. Now, this is SAC Kids First Children and Youth Fund to be placed on the ballot, especially since we lost the pop-up funding, which we thought was guaranteed, and found out it was not July first. We want, need, and deserve children's fund in the city of Sacramento now. They took a part of our future, and we deserve it back. Please vote yes to put on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Angela Baldardo.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Angela Madonado. I am a youth program manager with the Latino Coalition for a Healthy California. I live in District Two, and today I'm calling on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of the proposal for a Sacramento Children's Fund. What a better way to invest in crisis intervention but by allocating funds to youth and youth programs in the city of Sacramento to garner strong prevention programs so crises in our community are no longer a normalcy. Studies have long shown that prevention programs cut the cost of crisis interventions and crisis services in the long run. Creating a children's fund is an investment in our city for years to come. Invest in our kids through the existing city budget with no increase in taxes. I am asking my council member, Councilmember Loloey, to please, I urge you, to place this measure on the ballot and let the voters decide in November. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kennedy McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kennedy McIntyre, and I live in District Seven. Today, I am calling on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of the proposal of a Sacramento Children's Fund. Research shows that before and after-school programs reduce crime intruency by offering constructive alternatives to gangs, drugs, and violence. This measure will keep kids off the streets and out of trouble by providing them with a safe and supervised place to be when school is out of session. While many say youth are our future, they also are present and cannot be pushed to the side any longer. They deserve to have proper funding now. I'm asking Councilmember Jennings, my council member, along with everyone else, to please vote yes to place the measure on November's ballot for voters in the community to decide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Allegra Taylor. Allegra Taylor, if you'll unmute. Next speaker is Kate Wilkins.
Hello, council members. This is Kate Wilkins. I'm calling in. I support this measure. I think it's fabulous that there be permanent funding for youth. I'm calling to suggest, in addition to the measure, a Section G that would maybe allow for some broader funding of just the possibility of funding services and programs that address the correlation between youth mental health and wellness and climate change. The impacts of climate change locally in Sacramento will have large impacts on youth, and it's currently impacting youth. So it would just be wonderful to see the potential as this becomes a larger problem every year that more funding could be dedicated to this if those organizations doing projects like that do apply. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Allegra Taylor. Allegra Taylor. Allegra, you appear unmuted. I'm going to go to the next person, Tanya Miranda.
Hello, my name is Tona Miranda. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I live in District Two, and I'm a tribal liaison and policy advocate at Youth Forward. Today, I'm calling on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of the proposal for the Sacramento Children's Fund. My family has been in District Two for over forty-five years, and I've experienced firsthand how my community could benefit and the positive impact this could have on our youth. I lived through local intense gang violence, substance abuse, and overall hardships poverty has brought to my community. Our kids need a safe place to play, services that build their self-confidence and a sense of belonging here. Councilmember Sean Loloey, I urge you to place this measure on the ballot. Let the voters decide in November. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Margarita Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Diego Rodriguez, and I'm a teenager who lives in Southern Thomas District. I am calling on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of the proposal for the Sacramento Children's Fund. Investing in kids is investing in Sacramento's future. We need more after-school programs for when school is out. I am asking you, Councilmember Harris, as my council member, to vote yes on the council member ballot for us, the people, to vote and decide.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Charlene Maxwell.
Yes, this is Charlene with Dance Art Productions Outreach. I also support the kids' funding for November twenty-second. I feel like the kids will thrive in their community if we work together to build mental health, also endurance, and also more parenting and one-on-one mentor programs. So I also support November ballot and the SAC Kids. Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lee Lo.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Lee Lo, and I'm the co-executive director of the Asian American Liberation Network and also a part of the SAC Kids First Coalition. I am also located in District Two. And we are calling in support, in strong support of the SAC Youth Fund, making record investments in our youth. And if the youth is our future and our present, then we must invest in our youth so we may see a prosperous one. And as a youth, I didn't read, I didn't have to read city budgets to know that I was under-invested in growing up in DePaso Heights. And this is really an opportunity to really allow us to make record investments in our youth. And we strongly urge your I-vote to give the same voters that you trusted and to vote you in the opportunity to vote for the futures of young people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is D'Angelo Mack.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just first want to thank you all for tonight, specifically Councilmember Vang for her support and Councilmember Chenier for his leadership over the years. This is D'Angelo Mack. I'm the Director of Equity Justice with Public Health Advocates. And I just want to say that Public Health Advocates strongly supports placing this measure on the November ballot. My colleagues and friends have said so much, so I will be short. I just want to leave with a quote from James Baldwin. So often, we talk about young people being our future. We also talk about them being the problem and the issue in society. But Mr. Baldwin said, "For these are all of our children. We will all profit by or pay for what they become." And so I just urge you all to vote to put this on the ballot because our children definitely are us and our future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Mo Keshimi.
Hi, my name is Mo Keshmiri. I'm a local educational and youth advocate. Just wanted to say, ask the board, the city council, to support this measure. You know, what I'm hearing from teachers whenever I talk to them is that there's just more need than ever. And this measure doesn't go far enough. I think we need more money, but it's a good start. And it's past time, and I think it would be heartless to not support this because after COVID, our kids need much, much more support than we're giving them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Angel Bernardino.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Angel Bernardino, and I live in District Five. Today, I'm calling on behalf of SAC Kids First in support of this proposal. In Sacramento, there are well over a thousand unhoused families with children and teenagers living in vehicles and on the streets, not counting young adults and foster youth. No child should grow up this way with little to no options for progress. This measure will fund services and outreach to uplift these children and families and will help prevent young people from becoming chronically unhoused. They are victims, not a problem. Let's be a part of the solution. I'm asking the other council members to vote yes alongside Jay Chenier of District Five to place the measure on the November ballot for voters and the community to decide. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Darrell Roberts.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Darrell Roberts, co-founder, Robert Shandor, a founding member of SAC Kids First Coalition. Former supporter of Measure G, the last attempt at doing a dedicated youth fund. And the author of a SAC B editorial, which really started at a pen two months ago that talked about the need for a dedicated youth fund in light of the recent the Sunday morning killing of the five individuals. Unfortunately for me, that has been topped by the recent killing of Greg Grimes. Some of you call him Najee. Greg was a former team leader, site coordinator, Robert Shandor, as well as a former site coordinator at Rose Family Foundation in South SAC. It is important that we recognize what the council is saying today is that we're going to take this issue to the citizens of Sacramento to see what they think about prioritizing youth as being important. It's time, it's the right time, it's the right moment to stand up and be counted in favor of that action happening. Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing the vote being called. A resident of District 2, hoping that my councilmember will also support this measure tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Daniel Savala, resident of Sacramento Council District 2. This is a no-brainer. Super proud to be from Sacramento and thank you, Councilmember Jay Shanier, for all the work you've done over the years. I am a product of the after-school program, the free summer lunch program, the Sacramento Pow, everything that our city has done to help young people in on their journey. And everything I am today is because of the investment the city of Sacramento has put in me. This is a no-brainer and I ask you guys to please vote to support and put this on the ballot and let's get to work on helping it pass. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kay Crum.
Hi, my name is Kay Crum, a District 6 resident. When I was 13, my parents divorced and I lived with my mom. She didn't have a high school diploma and she was a homemaker before and after the divorce. At 18, I moved out and continued to live well below the poverty line until I was 25 years old. I worked in high schools as a teacher and in office assisting with youth behavior issues and saw how poverty impacted the lives of children during this critical time. However, I am deeply opposed to how this bill is proposed. The stated goals are weekly written and not specific. Instead, the resolution proposes that we give money to 501(c)(3)'s for these services. There is no regular interval to review achievements or areas for growth. Even though a commission is designated to oversee these funds, their role is not fully defined. Currently, $34 million of city funds are allocated to assist children, but we focus on resources on just children in poverty instead of addressing root causes. With the impact of climate change firmly at our door, with oppressive heat waves that threaten our way of life and our ability to access safe food and water, poorer neighborhoods are bearing the burden of these changes. As an alternative to delegating funds as a Band-Aid, let's ease the burden of one of the largest expenses faced by most Americans today, gas prices, car costs, and other vehicle expenses. On average, $806 a month, nearly $10,000 a year. That's money that could be in families' pockets now, even before factoring the time savings for parents when their children's independence and mobility does not rely on a car. This empowers families and reduces childhood poverty by reducing or eliminating people's need for cars in our city and increasing their funds. SAC RT's Ride Program is a great start, but we have a long way to go. To secure a future for our most vulnerable children and families in our city, these funds must be invested in climate equity, active transportation, and public transportation. This includes reliable and frequent transit and safe walking and cycling infrastructure, creating a culture where people do not rely on cars, improving living conditions through better air quality, better health, and it brings people out of poverty significantly. Please vote no.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Ralph Proper.
So I'm Ralph Proper. I'm Chair of the Environmental Council of Sacramento's Climate Committee. And I was recently taught college chemistry. I find, and recent research shows how important it is, young people are suffering from mental distress due to our worsting climate change and the lack of action by governments to deal with it. A recent survey internationally published in The Lancet found that three-quarters of youth are frightened of their future, more than half said humanity was doomed, and they feel betrayed by our leaders and the older generation. Therefore, we must pay attention to providing funds to implement actions recommended by the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, including increasing city staffing dedicated to accomplishing these actions. If this act language can be revised to provide funds for implementing those actions, it would go a great way to improving the mental health of our youth and accomplishing what we all want to accomplish. If that can't be accomplished through this modifying the SAC, we definitely have to consider, please, City Council and Mayor, providing funds for climate action for the sake of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Melody. Melody, if you'll unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Melody Bruley. I'm a parent and been involved with my kids with the youth pop-up. This program has been a great access to my kids, especially my daughter. Giving her something to do, giving her something to think about, giving her something to look forward to. With the programs like this being taken away, I believe I don't mind goes into bad things. And for my, for me as a parent, having a son that is having mental health issues right now, that is turning to the street. That is turning to marijuana because it's so freely given. If we don't stand up for our kids, who's going to stand up for them? We need, we need programs like that, like this, to give the kids something to do. So, so many times, we didn't see the news where kids are showing up to mall, to different places to fight because they have nothing to do. We need programs to give the kids something to do constantly, not just one time. Just constantly, we need positive mentors. We need people that's going to stand up for, for a program like this, especially our youth pop-up. Because this is the only thing a lot of the kids have to look forward to. And they actually look forward to it. They go and they go happily. And for those, for the, I know that my child is safe and is in a safe environment and that here in Sacramento. And to ignore what's going on here in Sacramento, we're going to lose more of our.
Thank you for your comments. Allegra Taylor. I believe Allegra is having audio problems. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And thank you to the members of the public for calling in. Let's turn it over to the members of the council for discussion and debate. I'm going to go right in order here. Councilmember Lalowee, and Vice Mayor Ashby, Mayor Pritam Geta, Councilboard Valenzuela, and Councilmember Harris. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Well, hopefully, it's just a discussion, not an argument. So, you know, we started in a positive way.
Whatever you want to say, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just have, first of all, I want to thank Sacramento Kids First. Great job. Very valid reasons why a set funding should be available. I do have some questions. Considering we're tapping into 40% of the cannabis revenue and listening to some of the stakeholders and ultimately Dr. Leno, it seems like cannabis is playing a very important role on our youth these days. And when you look at the cannabis industry in the city of Sacramento, approximately, I think it's safe to say that about 80% of that has fallen in District 2, 6, and 8. So my question is, considering the core action for this funding is to reduce homelessness, to have, to prevent youth violence. I like to add bullying, especially cyberbullying, to that list as well. That's another thing that's really hurting our youth these days. And, and these districts are really the core of these issues when it comes to the youth. Has the committee discussed what percentage of this 40% will be dedicated to the districts that are most affected by the excess level of cannabis activity in their district? I'll take it, no, no, there's no, is there anyone that can answer that or we're just talking?
It's the, the city council ultimately will make the decision about the distribution of the youth fund if it's passed by the voters. So there is no specific district distribution written into the measure, no. It'll be.
We could add, Mayor, that the mayor, the measure is really focused on those young people who are most at risk, which probably correlates very well to, to the districts and District 5. If you think about Oak Park, some of our poorer areas.
Yes.
Throughout the city. So we're looking at individuals, not that geography.
Right.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Lalowee, I would also add, there is language about making sure that we address our most disadvantaged youth. The other piece about doing it by district is that we also know that our unhoused youth is also transient. You can say specifically they're in D2 or sometimes even D8 because they may be in D5. They may go over to D4. And so we wanted to make sure that we kept the language broad enough to also, you know, because we know many of our unhoused folks are also very, they're transient.
I completely agree with you on that, Councilmember Wang. But I just want to make sure again that, you know, some of the districts within the city, or some of the zip codes, I should say, are affected. The youth is truly affected by various components, cannabis being one. But ultimately, mental stress, anxiety is, is very obvious. You know, we have 16-year-olds that are experiencing PTSD at such a young age. And, you know, we, I was present at an event with the mayor, actually, where one of the youth members that, who just became a father, was on the wrong side of the road, but now he's getting back on the right side of the road with the help of brother to brother. He shared a story that really, you know, to this day, it still gives me goosebumps. And that was that he has a young baby and when he drives around Sacramento, his windows have to be up. As he's driving, he's constantly moving around, looking at surroundings, which car is coming close to him. And for the first time in a very, very long time, a few months ago, he took his wife and, I mean, his partner and has his new baby to Texas. And he was talking about how for the first time in many, many, many years, he was driving around the town with the windows down. And he was really, you know, it was such a huge experience, something that we take for granted. But these kids in my district and ultimately your own district as well, Councilmember Wang, and to a certain extent, Councilmember Harris too, there is, there is a major issue. You know, it's way beyond after-school programs. We really need to hone down and see how we can help these youngsters to feel secure, to feel safe, and know that there's, there's, there's a safety net for them. And also, when I see the age spread, when we're talking about, you know, 25-year-olds that can also take advantage of, you know, of this. We also got to talk about opportunity and that's job opportunity. I think as, as our youth go, grow, grow older, we want to also let them see that, you know, the sky's the limit and here's some opportunities. And again, we go back to districts like District 2 where not only we, we don't have those opportunities, but we, the ones that we have, we're starting to lose. And those are businesses that are closing down, right? So I know that this committee has worked very hard on this and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in. But I also like to understand and see its benefit for the districts. And I know you said, well, we're not going to use district because of this, but let's face it, there are some districts that are in really, really bad shape.
Absolutely. And Councilwoman Lalowee, have you read the language packet? Actually, in this initiative in particular, there is a five-year strategic plan. And in that plan, it has to include basically target population to be served within each of the, each of the goals, right? That means that we have to be able to identify multiple data sources with populations that are impacted by poverty, trauma, and violence. And many of those young folks would be coming from your district. And so in the plan, actually, there is a strategic plan where the commission does have to make sure that we lay, lay these out. And we have to also make sure, to also name the populations that will be served based, based on those that are impacted by poverty, trauma, and violence.
And would some of this funding be, be invested in, into job opportunities for the youth within these districts?
We're for, as, as Mai said, there's going to be a five-year strategic plan that will be put together. But ultimately, the council will make those decisions. And if, if, which I believe it will, if the council says workforce development for young people is a priority, that's, that's how money will be spent. So people in your, I'll be gone, but people in your position who are making those decisions will have the ability to really focus. Like this year, we want to do workforce development. Maybe in two years, we want to do something else. But, but the populations, Sean, that you were discussing is exactly the population that this is focused on.
And, and that's why, you know, this has gotten my attention. But also, Councilmember Shanier, and I got to use your wisdom on this and your experience, there is one, one thing about workforce training. I understand that and I support that 100%. But there's also the conversation of having opportunities for these individuals that got trained to be able to obtain jobs. And that's one of the biggest things we're missing in some areas of our city, is those lack of opportunities for jobs. And I would hate for us to vote on this and have a big win on this. But if we don't have job opportunities for today's youth and tomorrow's dads, then what we'll see like District 2, we'll see the highest unemployment rate in the city. We'll see the highest crime rate in the city. And no matter how, I just don't want this to be something that we throw money at it and say, well, mission accomplished, recognizing that in addition to this, we need additional investments to go to some, some of these areas in our city that would incentivize businesses to come in so we can provide jobs for the youth. And that's one of our biggest downfall right now, where our youth, it's a lack of finances, economics, that our youngsters are joining gangs or they're getting into things that are not acceptable. So these are my concerns. And if I can get more of a clarification on this, I feel a lot better. I just want to make sure, if this goes on the ballot, that, you know, it's all about the kids, no politics involved, and specializing on organizations that are in specific districts. And my final question is, would these funds assist, obviously, nonprofit organizations? How about the for-profit organizations on programs that nonprofits don't provide? Families get some of this money. I mean, can, can some of this money be injected to families that are desperately need this money to have their kids sign up in different classes, whether it's karate or music classes or what have you that right now financially they can't afford?
Yeah, Councilwoman Lalowee, during the presentation, when Monica presented, CBOs is just one stakeholder that can actually access the money. That also include our city program, we can expand it. It also includes agency as well. If you read the language, if an agency wants to apply, they will have to actually match. That's a requirement that we ask. So for example, if Natomas Unified or SAC City wants some of these dollars to do, you know, some best practice programming, they will have to match dollars. But CBOs are not the only entity that can actually access these funds. This also means that the council wants to expand our city programs, we absolutely can do that. And so it, it is, the language is written broad enough where it's not just our CBOs. They do incredible work, but also allow opportunities for other organizations and entities to also apply.
How about the for-profit businesses in underserved districts? For example, if there's a, a music class that you have to pay to join and they're not a nonprofit or, or anything like that, would those families be able to get certain voucher or something to be able to sign up their, their, their children in classes that are not provided by the CBOs?
Sean, if it's a for-profit organization, I don't believe it would be eligible here. There are folks who are, if they're making money off the city on that, that's, as you know, as a business person, as I know as a business person, that's the point. That doesn't work, just to be blunt.
No, I, and I, and I hear you, but again, my, my, I just want to make sure that, that the youth have access and their parents have access to almost any activity that they would desire, right? So if, again, if you come to my district and if there's, and there's not a music class, after-school class, I, I think parents should still have the ability to sign up their kids in a music class. But if they don't have the money for it, then obviously there is no music class and that music class is going to close and go away. And now you have children within a district that do not have the same benefits as. And now you have children within a district that do not have the same benefits as, um, other children. So I don't know how the, again, I got to use your wisdom on this, Councilmember Shanir. I don't know how there can be a gap there, I mean, a, a bridge there, but these are, these are some of my concerns. And I'm, my apologies, I'm, I'm, I, I'm getting to this in the eleventh hour, but it's a, it's a fight for my district and, uh, the kids in my district.
All really great question, Councilmember Lowly. I would also add, if you are passionate about the arts and the music, there are incredible CBOs on the ground that actually serves our district, that could provide those services, um, just good quality as our private, um, entities as well. And so again, um, I actually think this measure is a tool for you to be able to draw more resources, uh, for the babies and the youth, um, not just in your district, but in, in all of our district, right? Especially yours, because I know that there are dire needs in District Two. And so, um, it was interesting, you mentioned the private music lessons, but I know so many CBOs on the ground that does art programming, um, and they can definitely use their resources to actually continue their services.
And I'm just using that as a cap, as a, really as an example, uh, Councilmember. But, um, yeah, with that, Councilmember Wang, um, um, you know, I'm, I'm good with this.
Um, okay.
We'll just have to make sure, I, I just need, I, I, if I can get some assurance that certain areas will be paid more attention with this ten million dollars, um, that would be great.
Sean, the, the, the assurance will have to come from the council.
But, uh, Jay, let me, since you're not going to be here, let me try. Yeah. I, 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 I will, yes, I will assure you that that will be the case because the money must go to kids who live in disadvantaged neighborhoods. That, that's who cannot afford the kind of private music lessons that you described in your question a moment ago. So by definition, just like the funding that we, we did at a Measure U for youth sports facilities in North Sacramento, just as we made a number of other significant investments in North Sacramento, North Sacramento will be a big part of the implementation of this initiative.
Without question.
Without question. Okay, Vice Mayor Ashby, if I may, thank you, Councilmember Lowy, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate it. And I have quite a bit to say too, I'll try to be succinct. Um, and maybe I'll turn off my video because I don't know why it's glitching out today, but it is. Um, so first of all, I just want to say, I really appreciate everybody who worked on bringing this forward. And Monica and your crew did a great job with the presentation. I especially appreciate, uh, the pediatrician giving her truth. It may be more truth than some folks even in the group wanted to hear, but I appreciate it because it's the part we need to say out loud about why this amount, why this money, why this amount of money, what's happening out there in our communities. And I think, you know, we intuitively know that it, it's, it, it would be a good idea to take some of those funds and use them for the purposes of basically buying down a negative impacts of those, uh, expenditures. So I'm good on that piece. Let me just say, like the mayor, I was a critic of the last one that came around. And there are quite a few changes here, and I'd like to talk about what some of those changes are that, um, are good in my, from my vantage point. And then I have some serious concerns too about this measure and I'd like to share those. And then, you know, end with kind of where I think I land today. Uh, I think a lot about my dad. My dad, like the mayor said, he spent his life working on mental health. My dad was a champion for youth, like a national champion for youth. He was the head of foster care for the state of California, he was child welfare director for San Diego County. And the whole time that I was growing up, my dad was called often for his advice for national programs. And I, I recently found, uh, he's deceased, but I recently found some of his handwritten notes from a speech he was giving about a program for youth and why it was so important. And I have those in my hand, I'm sorry, my camera's not really working, I'd show them to you, not that you care as much as I do about my dad's handwriting, but his words, I thought, might be really important and also would illustrate how I, how my decision is going to be informed today. First of all, he wrote himself a, a note in the corner and said, remember that it's always for the children. A note to himself before he ever walked out in front of the group for the presentation. And then he wrote that caring about how kids feel means emphasizing their environment. That's twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. You must provide them seamless delivery, it must be strength-based, family-centered, and the environments must be experiential, vocational and academic. It has to be unconditional and it has to take them all the way through level twelve. It has to be ongoing and they have to be participants in their own future. You have to focus on their wellness, understand their anger and give them space. Show them resiliency and always keep them safe. These were my dad's notes about the most important things for youth. And he was giving this speech as the head of foster care for the state of California to a group of people who are moving forward in initiative to help kids, uh, in foster care. So bearing that in mind, I'm really proud, as the mayor stated in his State of the City, to be the host of the largest youth service program in the city of Sacramento. Our Youth Action Corps has had thousands of kids go through. And I love the idea that potentially this is written in a way that that program could be funded citywide. Something that Mayor Fargo and I have talked about a lot of times needs to happen. And previous iterations of this would not have allowed for that because all of the money would have been spent outwardly and the council didn't have any discretion. I'm really proud of my team, Elena Quintero, Andre Favilla, Karina Telamontes, Deanna Reed, and Bree Klein, who have all worked really hard for years to build that Youth Action Corps. If any of you have ever come to our events, we literally have dozens of youth helping us run everything that we do. We have really large events with thousands of people. So I'm grateful for them, but they also contribute. It's not a one-way street, it's a two-way street. Let's start with what's really good about this proposal. First of all, the five-year council-driven plan is a vast improvement, meaning that the council sets out a list of priorities before a single dollar is spent and identifies what they want to work on. I've been on this council for twelve years. I can tell you that twelve years ago, what that council would have selected as their five years of priorities was very different from what this council would choose. We have, I have one former colleague, Jay and I have one former colleague who actually believed that youth should never work. So he would have vehemently disagreed with a workforce program. He just thought kids shouldn't work and he would have been vocal about it. And, uh, and there were others who had really strong opinions about things, um, that I think would have been heard and would have become priorities in those five-year plans. And I think there has to be room for that for councils in the future because we'll all, this, this program's going to go on and councils need to be able to determine what things they could be focused on in that period of time would be the most impactful in the lives of kids. And so that five-year decision-making plan, that's a real game changer of an addition to this proposal. The most important change that you all have made is the city council having the final approval. Because putting this in front of other folks who are not accountable to the voters for where the budget dollars are spent is a mistake, always. You just, you just can't give that authority away, it doesn't work. You probably all have seen it even in the last few years where we've tried to give boards or commissions more authority than the council. It turns into chaos every time, no matter how you feel about the decisions they're bringing forward. Ultimately, there are nine people elected to make the decisions with the budget and we're going to be held accountable for that every single time, or those council members will be. And so they need the final votes. I really appreciate that that's in here. This is also the first time that this has been proposed where it's not a takeaway, meaning these dollars are already allocated somewhere else and we're going to take them away from those areas and spend them over here instead. That's an improvement. I greatly appreciate the match requirement the Councilmember Vang has described. Because previously, school districts and school board members and trustees came forward and asked us to support these bills with the intention of taking city funds to do things in school districts. And while I don't really disagree with that, they have their own budgets and should have to match those dollars. The city cannot withstand having to carry every school district in the city. There are five or six school districts in the city, depending on how you count. Uh, and we can't carry all of their budgets, we can't even close all of their gaps. So if they want to match, I think that's a great add. Let's talk about some things I dislike about this that are still persistent, that make it really hard. I strongly dislike ballot box budgeting, and I know Councilmember Harris does do it, I guarantee we're going to hear about it from him tonight. And there are many, many people in the city of Sacramento who strongly dislike ballot box budgeting. Ballot box budgeting is when you decide at the ballot box that a certain amount of money is always going to be used for this purpose. The reason it's so problematic is because sometimes in the future, you have a different problem or a different goal that might involve something completely different, or you have massive budget cutbacks, which Councilmember Shanir and I experienced, where you're literally cutting back every single department. And another bad thing about this is there's no provision for a recession, there's no pause button, there's also no sunset provision. It just goes on into perpetuity, no matter what else is happening in the rest of the city. This forty percent of whatever cannabis sales would be will always go to this source. And I could see how if you were one of the people who stands to benefit from that, that you would want that. But you have to think about that in comparison to what some of the other things are that might be taken away from. And I think that some people are going to be hard pressed on that issue. I- it's tough. The hard part for me is sometimes I feel like core city services, especially like parks, don't get the attention that they need when they're so integral to what's happening with youth. For example, right now, the city of Sacramento has forty contracts to build various components to our parks. They may be whole new parks, they may be major components, like a foot salt court to a park. Forty contracts, do you know how many city staff oversee those four contracts, draw up those landscape designs, do those RFPs, manage the contracts and make sure that the performance is secured? Four, and two of the four quit, and they're all underpaid. So I worry that those things don't get enough attention. Park maintenance, how well the parks are kept, how clean they are, how usable they are for youth. I worry that those things are not included as important to youth or to our communities or to families. And so I don't like that, well, the city could use some of these funds for their own programs or the library could use some of these funds for their programs, that it's written in a way that they'd have to compete against the nonprofit sector. The nonprofit sector doesn't have to pay prevailing wage, as we've discussed earlier tonight. The nonprofit sector doesn't have to provide health insurance. I worry about a slippery slope where good union jobs in our Parks Department and good union jobs in the city of Sacramento are degraded away because we've transferred funding to nonprofits that don't provide health insurance or don't provide prevailing wage for people. I think that's a real issue, something we'll have to keep our eye on in the future should this pass, that we're not just taking money away from city and giving it to entities to do the same thing that the city would have done, but not paying people well. Those are some of my concerns. One of the callers called in and said, you know, root causes, she's right. The one thing, you know, we all know, all of us who've ever worked around youth, is that if you really want to help a child, the best way to do so is to help stabilize the family and address root causes, so poverty, housing. Many of the city's priorities around housing are never identified as being things for youth. For example, building a shelter in my district, converting a hotel into family housing focused on kids. That wouldn't be in this program. Now, maybe some of the services or resources in the, in the facility would be included, but paying for that building, getting it built, not included here. And those are priorities to this council, and you will be taking ten million dollars away from that priority as well. Just something to think about, how you lay that out and how you address it and how you weigh these priorities against each other. Climate action, a real issue, especially for young people. But hard to see how that fits in with this ten million. What would it look like if we allocated ten million dollars a year towards our climate action goals? Would it be bike lanes and, and more tree canopy and, and safer streets? What would that look like? How would that impact our youth? And how do we make sure those things get included? It will be a real challenge for future councils to make sure that those are included in a five-year plan in a meaningful way that allows the city to really progress on their various goals that they have, because we have so many. Lastly, I would just say to my colleague, Councilmember Loloey, a couple of things. Your point about people being able to access piano lessons or ballet or whatever is a valid one. But when you work with strong nonprofits, for example, City of Refuge and Councilmember Shanir's district, you give them funds, those are the kinds of things they pay for. They make sure that every family has access to whatever it is that the youth are interested in doing, whether it's soccer or ballet or swim lessons. So it's just important that you hold those nonprofits to a very high standard, if you're funding them for the purposes of achieving those goals. I would also say would be a big mistake to start carving this money up by district. Three of the most horrific crimes in the last year have been Natomas families. Greg Grimes, Coach Grimes, that Daryl Roberts just talked about, that's a Natomas guy. DJ Gio, that's a Natomas guy, both shot, murdered in our city. Three little girls killed by their dad in domestic violence, Natomas. I know a lot of people on this dais like to say that Natomas is, you know, doesn't need any help or support, but I would argue that kids are kids regardless of their parents' address. And we should never carve things up based on where they live. We should carve things up based on what they need. Let the kids just be kids. So my final comment here, Councilmember Vang and others who've worked so hard on this, I am willing to vote to place this on the ballot today. I think it's a good move to put this before the people of Sacramento and let them decide. I think there are some challenges and I really wanted to walk through them because I think some of the things that I've said today will be the challenges that the coalition that supports this initiative will face in the months to come. And I'll make one other commitment here, while I'm going to stop a little bit short of endorsing it wholly, I will say I will move forward to November with an open mind about what to do next. Because I do think it's important that we serve our youth. I've spent twelve years doing that for my office. I think it would be helpful if there were more funds to do so. But I also want to make sure that it is not at the expense of our libraries and our parks and our very hardworking, dedicated city staff, nor that it's at the cost of good union jobs in the city of Sacramento. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to say one thing just for clarity in terms of facts, that, uh, the measure is very clear, that city-funded youth programs are eligible, uh, for funding. Um, just as the.
Yes, Mayor, but they have to compete against nonprofits.
No, that's true. There's no question. I, you're just, there, it's all eligible, that's all I was saying, right?
I, I understand, but asking our city staff to compete for city dollars against nonprofits is problematic.
Okay, uh, Mayor Putem Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I, you know, one, I, I want to thank Sac Kids first for their consistent, uh, um, advocacy, their commitment, their engagement, their active engagement in the community. Um, I, uh, you know, since I started on the council, my first, the reason I ran and, and my first vote was to protect, uh, the, uh, the, uh, fourth R program, our pre, our, uh, before and after-school childcare programs and youth program and the start program. Uh, it, it is, that has been and will continue to be a fundamental, um, you know, value of mine. And I supported Measure Y for that ma- for that ma- main reason, because it's, it's important to, to focus on our youth and support Measure G. And the, the thing that I think about it on the positive in this, in an initiative like this, is that when we, when we do go through tough times, because that's the reality, the big question is here, uh, in, is that, uh, if we go through tough times, uh, the sad historical nature of all governments is that kids get cut first. Uh, and, and that's the unfortunate part. And when a program gets cut during a recession, uh, during times of deficit, it many times, it takes three, four years before, uh, recovery occurs and, and, and it takes four, five, six years before we restart these programs. And a fourteen, and a four-year, four-year window, uh, of the life of a youth is, uh, is, uh, a, a timeframe that changes so much. And I do believe that there's a responsibility when a youth leaves the school property and steps on a city sidewalk. Uh, I do believe there is an equal responsibility as a community that we support our youth. And so, uh, the, so let me start on, on, again, on saying that I, I appreciate Sac Kids first for recognizing that, uh, in order to make long-term, sustainable change in our community and our youth, we have to have a level of predictability because time is of the essence for kids. So all, uh, let me stop there. Um, the, the, the second thing I, I, I do want to, uh, also recognize and my comments are because I want to make sure that, that I point out that the council will be making. I wanna make sure that that I point out that the council will be making many of these decisions if the public chooses to pass this measure uh in November. Uh and I I wanna make sure, you know, Mr. Mayor, you said you're gonna remember uh the conversations and that all of us who are uh, you know, all of those who are present and watching are gonna remember those conversations. But I do wanna go back a little bit to what uh councilmember Loloey uh mentioned. I mean, the fact is, there are areas of our district that have more CBOs than others. And there are areas of our district that also have youth uh that uh that I can can access some of these resources. And there are those areas in our district that do not. Uh and I will and I I also point out uh and I think it's fair that councilmember Loloey brought up the point that that the preponderance of the revenue and the impacts and the exposure are in two districts. Um, you know, and and I think there is a a question of equity that's involved here uh and making sure that the youth uh that that are around these areas and communities also have a level of respect and equity. So first off, I'll I'll ask, you know, uh, you know, Monica from SacKids First um to discuss to a- answer or respond to this. Uh and uh and also uh councilmember Vang, because we know she'll be here. She's one of the proponents for this. But I I'd like to ask, are are you going to take into consideration as you advocate for this, if the voters choose to pass this? Uh that there'll be equity for um all of the 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 communities as kind of uh councilmember Loloey mentioned?
Yeah, yes, Councilmember Gara, I'm happy to address your question. Um so just first and foremost, today, the actual vote will be a yes vote to place the measure on the ballot. Now, just wanna clarify that and then if the measure is but voted on by the voters of Sacramento in November, we will then begin the implu- you know, talking about the implementation process. The council will be able to appoint those um on the Planning and Oversight Committee. And then we will, you know, get into a real conversation about which communities have been the most impacted, as you mentioned, by uh, you know, the the industry of cannabis, just uh overall in in Sacramento. And so, you know, happy to continue to have conversations with you, your office, as well as some of your constituents and folks that live in District Six who are a part of SacKids First and would like to see that funding go to youth services and programs in District Six. So uh, you know, I I can, you know, commit to at least SacKids First having those conversations with you continuously um and also looping in the District Six constituents that are a part of our coalition. So um that's my answer to your question, and I I don't know if uh councilmember Vang would like to make
And Mayor Potemgara, I would also say um if the voters pass and it comes back to council, uh the mayor and I uh chair the Racial Equity uh Committee, which you are also on as well, and I think getting guidance from that committee will be absolutely critical in the implementation process.
I I I handed over the baton to councilmember Jennings on the Racial Equity Committee, but
That's right, but that committee, I think, can definitely uh provide uh some framework uh with the the Oversight Committee.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and he's got four more years too, so uh.
Great.
Uh so, well, thank you. Uh I I I appreciate that because you know, the the challenge is, I'll say, at least speaking for District Six here, is uh we don't have the robust network of nonprofits. I wanna thank Bridge Network over it at the uh Matt Elmo Slider Clubhouse for their efforts that they do out there. Uh we have a few nonprofit entities uh in the north area that are technically across the street uh in the in the um uh outside, right outside of District Six um such as EMBI and others. But there's very few, un- unless you're around an area where you have a lot of nonprofits and then you're gonna have a challenge in in competing for these dollars. So uh just because you live in a community where you don't have as many active nonprofits or uh, you know, there there the George Simms Center and the Elmo Slider Clubhouse are the only uh as areas of support in the south area in Glen Elder, Avondale, Fruit Ridge Manor um and uh Southeast Village. Uh so, you you know, to for to me, I think that's gonna be a critical part of whatever the council decides to do. And I and again, this is all after if this gets approved on the ballot, if it gets passed by the voters, but it's important to have that that conversation now. I I also wanna put again on the table the 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 comments about workforce because I I hope that that uh that not only are we continuing, and I've said this before when I've supported the past measures, that for me, it's always been about how we find and help support youth, find their passion and find their hope and inspiration. Because that's really the motivator in changing the lives of young people. And not necessarily the 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 warehousing of young children in uh activities uh uh for the sake of providing safe spaces. Yes, we need to provide safe spaces, but uh the rigor and the engagement and the commitment to inspire youth. Uh and I I do believe that finding the career and the passion and focusing kids and uh in what they wanna be in the future. Uh because many kids, including, you know, the way that, you know, my younger siblings and I, we didn't know what kind of future uh was awaiting us. We didn't know that we could become engineers or uh the or uh in the uh i- in the world of providing and constructing affordable housing. Who would have thought my sister would have been building affordable housing for farm workers after living in the dilapidated farmer's house? I do think that there is a a dual role that needs to happen in the way we do this. Which brings me to my point here about also uh that I I strongly um, you know, and Mr. Mayor, this is where I uh I I also I share the concerns of uh uh councilmember Ashby, cuz we have programs like the Fire Academy that could lead youth into six-figure uh uh, you know, uh, you know, career, long-term opportunities by getting them into careers here with our own local city. Uh and uh I would like to see uh, you know, how programs within our fire department uh that have started over at Hiram Johnson uh to encourage in a ch- in a time right now when we are trying to improve the diversity of a fire department, how we start using and focusing to making sure that our young people are engaged in the excitement of fire science and making sure that we're focusing on on um on those uh on those pieces. And so um, you know, again, I I wanna make sure that that's a part of it, and maybe you could talk a little bit about uh uh uh, you know, councilmember Vang, if you've thought about how uh our departments and our uh uh programs that we're trying to move forward uh also uh stay sustainable in um uh such as that.
Yeah, as Monica mentioned, um if we are so lucky that the voters approve it, I think that will be part of the implementation plan, making sure that we work with staff because it's really the desire of this council. I think something that Councilwoman Ashby said that was a strength of this uh ballot initiative is that truly at the end of the day, it's the council that makes that decision. And so if that is the direction of the council, uh that will most likely happen. I also just wanna put on record because there's a lot of comparison about programs, whatnot. All of them are amazing. Our city staff does great, amazing job. But I do wanna point out that the amount of funding that we're talking about, forty percent of cannabis revenue just right now is literally one point three percent of our entire budget. And so I just wanna put that number out there um just to let you all know that while it sounds like a lot, it's really not in comparison to our budget, and this is how hard young people have to fight every single time to ensure that we actually set aside funding for them. I just wanna put that on record. Um because I, that's what we're doing in this moment. Um there are other departments that make up a big percentage of our budget, right? And no one has conversations about that. What the young people are asking for with the cannabis revenue, which is forty percent, makes up one point three percent of our budget, and I just want to make sure that I put that on record and share that. But in terms of the 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 question that you asked, Councilmember Gara, absolutely, I think the strength of this ballot initiative is that it is the ultimate decision of the council. Um and I know workforce is something that is also incredibly important uh to me as well as, you know, someone who served on the set of board with you. Um hang on, it is uh, you know, something that I think many of our staff cares about and will definitely be part of the implementation plan.
Well, thank you. And I want I I wanna add one thing, if I may, Councilmember Getta, which is that uh and I've had talks with uh some of our firefighters, leadership uh the firefighters. I personally, as mayor of the city, am gonna fight uh for more apprenticeship for uh public safety jobs. I I think that is a tremendous nexus and frankly, we wanna build some new coalitions. It should not be public safety on the opposite side of youth. You know, that's kind of the traditional dynamic too often, right? And we wanna change that, and so absolutely gonna fight for that.
No, and I and I appreciate that. And that's again, goes back to my point. When we've tried to maintain some of these programs, it is parts of our district that have the biggest challenge of of maintaining them. So I wanna make sure we don't uh we don't miss out that we also have those. So look, uh and to councilmember Vang's point, uh look, that that that's no, that's the reason why I voted for Measure G because we know uh the the percentage that is actually spent on youth. Uh and it shouldn't just be the city, but I wanna make sure that we're also uh thinking uh how we address multiple goals here we're trying to achieve. We're trying to do important efforts of improving the the diversity in our uh in in our de- our fire department. We wanna improve the wages. Uh and uh and if you look at the income levels around Fi- Fire Station Ten uh and also our challenges in our the youth that face there, I mean, those to me, those are the things that I wanna make sure that uh that if the voters approve this, if this makes it onto the ballot and if the voters approve this, that we also are making sure that we're making multiple goals. Again, that's why uh, you know, uh this, I I do support the idea. I think what makes it better is is that there is a strategic plan involved in this, but these are things that we have to have uh uh sobering conversations about. The the trade-off here is, yeah, it is a small money that we're amount of money that we're locking in, but it's coming out of two specific districts. So I'm going to end with those comments to say that I I've been a supporter of of making sure that we're funding our youth in past ballot measures. Uh I'll continue to be a supporter for our youth. But in uh and in this particular case, I wanna make sure that as moving forward, we don't forget those particular issues. And I I appreciate Monica uh for you being uh willing and and on the public record to say, look, we're gonna advocate for those communities in the southeast area as much as we'll advocate for everyone in our city as well. Uh as much as your own community in Meadowview, you talk passionately about growing up uh and experiencing the challenges in Meadowview and how much we need to do there. So I wanna thank you for that. Uh with that, uh I do wanna thank uh uh all of the people that have called in, Mr. Mayor, and and uh will be supporting this to get on the ballot measure today.
Thank you, Councilmember Getta, Mayor Potemgeta. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, um and thank you, everybody, for bringing this forward here tonight. Um so a lot of you know, cuz I've said it here on the dais. I mean, I got engaged in public work when I was thirteen years old um cuz my dad encouraged me to volunteer and most of my career has been either as a young person organizing for change or working with young people organizing for change. So I really wanna recognize also the time that my other colleagues that weren't a part of developing this measure have spent in their careers outside of this dais, councilmember Jennings, Vice Mayor Ashby, Mayor Potemgara, supporting these measures, doing that work outside of the dais and really recognize this council overall for your steadfast support of young people. Um you know, part of why it was a very small number of kids who got through, very, very small number of us who started freshman year at my high school and graduated and went to college. There was probably about a dozen of us in a pretty large high school that actually were successful in that quest was because I had access to after-school programs and leadership opportunities and and things that I wouldn't have otherwise had in a community like Oildale um and Kern County. So I that's a big part of why I supported Measure G, and I'm very inclined to support this tonight, but I have been getting a lot of questions that I wanna ask the committee today specifically from adults. I just wanna call that out. Um a lot of adults are asking questions. I haven't gotten any questions from young people, just encouragement to please support this. So but the adults that have reached out to me have some questions and concerns that I wanna give you all a chance to respond to directly here um before we take our vote today. First, on climate change investments, my reading of this measure is that if it involves youth and especially if it involves something like youth mental health, completely fundable through this measure if it passes. Is that your interpretation as well?
That, yes, I mean, that that's, there's a lot of leeway. And that's why we wanna make sure that the council has the flexibility it needs to meet the moment of the day. Uh there is um green uh pathways to jobs, and that's significant. Um so, yeah, definitely, right? That's a council decision.
Thank you, um councilmember. And what are the projections for cannabis BOT revenue? You probably know this better than anybody, councilmember. But what are we looking at in terms of is this gonna grow over time? Do we expect there to be more BOT revenue?
Well, a- as you know, because you've been in the hearings, there's a lot of volatility in the industry. Um, you know, I think the county deciding not to do uh not to get into the cannabis business is actually an economic boon for the city. Um so I wouldn't expect personally to for it to go down. I think it's not gonna increase as much or as quickly as it has. Uh, you know, I hate to say it, but COVID was good to cannabis. Um, you know, we know that a lot of our dispensaries tripled their sales during that period of time. So I I think there will be slow and steady growth. Um that's just my prediction, but I don't see a lot of forecasts because there's so many unknowns, particularly around the federal government and what they do with it.
Okay, but I mean, historically, the revenue has grown pretty significantly. Um so we have a lot of hope that it will stay consistent if not.
That would be great.
Yeah, so we're not talking about taking away money from other general funds necessarily. Hopefully, this is additive um and it's additional money coming in. Um so you've mentioned, uh the team mentioned ten million dollars is the estimate for how much money this will generate. Can you talk about how that compares currently to money we spend on youth programs?
We s- we spend and and there are folks in the audience who can do this better than me. Um but and I wanna be really clear also because we we spend a lot right now, but much of it is federal ARPA and CARES money. So it's one-time money that's gonna go away. Our YPSI budget as a whole in the department, I believe it's about eight million dollars. Um, we we spend dollars elsewhere. The the challenges, and we've been working with Emily and and the Department of Finance, we're trying to get a handle on what that means for ongoing dollars. We don't have that yet. We hopefully will have that cuz it's it's complicated, as some of you have pointed out. You know, if you do percentages of a pool or a park, what does that look like? But what we're trying to do is is develop a number that says this is exactly what we spend for programming directed towards young people. And then there's there's money after that.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm asking that more because I think that some people look at this and think this is this massive money grab on behalf of young people at the city, and it's like, no, this is actually kind of codifying where it is with like a slight increase. Um but it's not like we're doubling or tripling how much money we're spending for youth. I actually think, I mean, there could have been a conversation about different numbers here, but I'm biased in that respect. Um so actually, this is a pretty modest proposal. We're basically saying, hey, this is what we're doing now. Let's kinda lock it in so that we make sure the young people don't pay the price down the line. Um
We we are not gonna, we are not gonna solve the city's problems with this ten million dollars.
Totally.
Thirty-one and a half percent of the city's population is under twenty-five. So it's in one way or another eligible for that. The the this youth population is nowhere, uh the city's spending is nowhere near thirty-one percent of the budget.
Absolutely. Um, okay, and then I will say in relation to the Vice Mayor's point, cuz I just wanna make sure I'm super clear. When we talk about a decision to say fund a nonprofit for something the city might otherwise do, that all comes back to the council. This isn't like we're deciding on a five-year plan and then it goes away and we never get to decide. So it wouldn't necessarily be we're contracting out park services cuz obviously that's something I'd be super concerned with as well.
Well, first of all, there's no, yeah, we're not doing facilities. But yes, you're correct. It's ultimately the council will make the funding decisions.
Okay.
Other otherwise, the mayor would not be entertaining this.
I appreciate that. Um and I do, I wanna appreciate all the changes that have been made and and then you're indulging me in these questions that I've been getting in my email all day and some on text um right now. Um I just want um to make sure that, I mean, I'm gonna be supporting this measure tonight. Um and since everybody else is talking about things they'd like to be funded because we're all just assuming it's gonna pass, and I'm just gonna put that energy out into the universe like this is gonna pass this November. Um I really wanna put CB Circle, New Halvisha squarely on the radar, um otherwise known as Marina Vista, Alder Grove. Part of my heartache with the shooting on the Fourth of July, which unfortunately claimed a life of a very beloved person in Natomas, is that it wasn't even the first shooting in my district that weekend. And we had already had a shooting in CB Circle involving yet again, somebody under the age of thirty, I believe, and and this is a trend that that community gets so overlooked cuz it's sandwiched between downtown and Land Park, and they have so much need. Um and I think I will spend every opportunity I can on this dais to continue to highlight those young people. There are almost a thousand young people in a very small concentrated area. That elementary school is one hundred percent public housing kids. We can and should be doing so much more for that area. And so in the future, when this passes, um I hope that we will have them be a part of that conversation as you're doing your data analysis and strategic plan because they have been overlooked quite a bit, and I'm very passionate about making sure that continues. But all that said, as a young person, former young person, I don't get to say that anymore. Councilmember Vang reminded me that when I turned thirty-six, I'm no longer a young Democrat anymore, so I'm now a former young person uh saying that as someone who benefited from these programs in another county but understands what is at stake, who watched kids in my high school choosing between drugs, getting pregnant, dropping out of school, making choices that they should, nobody should have to make when they're a young person in any community, I'm very, very strongly in support of this measure. I really hope all of us will consider supporting it. In the end, we're asking the voters to decide, and I think the changes that have been made In the end, we're asking the voters to decide and I think the changes that have been made here only make it better. So thanks for everything.
Well, and and thanks Sat Kids first because they led the effort. Uh, I think Councilmember Vang, the mayor and I were were in some ways innocent bystanders bystanders. Um, but you know, those kids that you were talking about in C V Circle, those are the kids that we have to get to early. Um, and and frankly, I know there'll be economic discussions about this or financial discussions about the we get to those kids early, we're going to save money over time. We know that. We know prevention saves money. We just have to invest.
A hundred percent. Mayor, I I need to respond to Councilmember Valenzuela's question about the point that I brought up. I'll be as quick as I can. But I appreciate Councilmember Shanir pointing out that a lot of city staff jobs are um about building and construction, but remember that you can contract out city jobs by paying nonprofits to do things like after school programs instead of paying city staff to do after school programs. You heard Count, you heard Councilmember Gara talk about Head Start and First. Those are all programs that in the past have been in jeopardy of us losing city employees who are union employees with union wages and healthcare and all of that uh in favor of paying nonprofits to do the same work. So there are many ways that the city can incidentally end up contracting things out by taking money away from city services or using funding to pay for other folks to do things that are cheaper than they are for the city to provide those services. So I don't want to belittle city staff by pretending like the only way we would be contracting out would be so intentional as to say something like, we're going to hire out for building parks. That would be really wrong.
Understood. Okay, let me turn it over now to Councilmember Harris and Jennings and then we're going to wrap this up. We got a motion on the floor unless there's a a substitute we're gonna vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I'd like to congratulate Jay Shanier. He's a very tenacious individual, to be sure, equal to myself. We have been on opposite sides of this issue for years. Uh, but you know, the the picture that was painted today about investing in youth, it's 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 all true. Investing in youth does net good results. But there are ways that you can do it by making intelligent decisions and there are ways that you can do it by locking up money to make a council not have the flexibility to make decisions that they need to bake in all kinds of conditions. So we've heard about the dream and now I want to just post some economic reality here about what doing a tax lockbox or ballot box budgeting is, as Angela Gashby said, what that really means. You know, youth spending is very important. We we heard some testimony like from Anna and Daniel Savala about how youth programs really benefited them. Well, those programs benefited them without a tax lockbox surrounding it because people made good decisions about how to spend money in a municipal sense or or from the school district. You know, I myself grew up in very meager surroundings and I am definitely a former young person, Councilmember Valenzuela, much more former than you. Um, but I grew up, you know, in very meager surroundings and yes, after school programs benefited benefited me very substantially. Uh, there were tremendous temptations to me on the streets of L.A. I could have gone the wrong way very easily. Those temptations were around me constantly. But I did have good parenting at home. I had a single mom who loved me and uh, you know, kept an eye out, but I was pretty much a street gamin. So I made a lot of my own decisions, but all of those programs that benefited me were ru- run by the school district. Now, Prop thirteen threw a big wrench in the works and that's why our school districts are hurting so desperately. And they're not supporting the programs like the ones that I benefited from. But does that mean the city can and should pick up the slack? Well, I think if we can, we should, but can we? So let's let's just look at a couple of things that are going on right now. We are in a major contraction. We have runaway inflation and we are staring down the barrel of another recession. When Jay Shanier brought forward the idea of floating a ninety million dollar bond to uh supplant our housing trust fund, we did an analysis of our budget. And what the upshot of that was, was that our average annual um revenue growth is one point nine five percent projected over ten years, but our expenditures are three point one percent. Uh, you know, that, and then you take a look at what Emily Coen sent to us about Calper's obligations. And the fact that uh the that their return on investment has gone negative. And what does that mean to our budget? It means if you look at the balance sheet that Emily set out, it means that our projected forecast for deficits gets worse and it's already red. And it gets worse by tens of millions of dollars every year. We're going to have to deal with that, you know. Uh, I won't be on this council. Jay won't be on this council. Neither will Angelique. Perhaps Eric won't either. So the rest of you are going to have to wrestle with very, very difficult decisions to make. Uh, there's another aspect too. And that is that when you partition your unrestricted general fund revenues and then you go out for a bond, the bond agencies will look at that partition and say, that's not flexible and it can degrade your bond rating. And if you don't believe in the veracity of that statement, just ask our city treasurer, John Colville. That could be a disaster for a council going down the road. My point is that you can make these decisions to spend on youth on any given Tuesday. You don't have to lock it up, but you need the flexibility to make the decisions that you need to make. So youth spending is very important. There's lots of ways to look at youth spending. Is spending on climate change uh projects important to youth? I think absolutely. I think it's existential. And I think that this kind of tax lockbox will not allow this council to make decisions to spend on climate projects. Uh, you know, I asked for climate money at mid-year. It was not forthcoming. If this passes, I can guarantee you, if you look at mid-year carryover, year over year in the out years, there will be no fun money to spend at mid-year. You're going to come up short and you will not be able to spend on climate related projects which are youth projects, the most essential youth projects. Spending on public safety benefits youth. Spending on fire suppression benefits youth in many ways and they have their own youth programs. And as has been discussed here, uh, there are ways to bring a lot of our youth into the fold and to really good paying jobs that's our community in myriad ways. Look at our community survey. My takeaway from our community survey is that our constituents want this city to be clean. They want it to be safe and they do not perceive it as either. I've had so many parents call me and talk about the feces and the needles that their children have to traverse to get to school. If you look at the fundamental thing that people in the city want right now, they want to deal with the poverty on the streets, they want to deal with the cleanliness and they want to deal with the crime that they are dealing with every single day. That is a priority issue. That's going to take a lot of spending. We're not partitioning our budget for anything else and we haven't talked about partitioning our budget for anything but a youth program. Look fundamentally, I feel that this is wrong. It's just the wrong way to make a decision. A lot of our CBOs we found have struggled to invoice properly or keep track of their programs and their success rates. This is a real problem. You know, just because they're a nonprofit doesn't mean they're a good nonprofit. I would agree with Angelique and the mayor that this is slightly better than Measure G, but certainly not enough to gar- garner my vote. City manager, let let me ask you a quick couple of questions. You're on, Howard.
Yes, I am.
So this council voted to place on the ballot a measure to deal with standing up shelter bits. And you worked very hard with the Conway Initiative to bring it down to the level of reality and you put in escape routes so that if we didn't have money, we wouldn't be spending it. If this measure passes, do you think that we would be able to actually fund that that ballot initiative that we are, we have already voted to put on on the on the ba- November ballot?
I I mean, the short answer is no, but let me answer a a different way. So I do appreciate the the uh the thoughtful presentation from Sat Kids First Coalition, all the passionate testimony here. Uh, but that doesn't change the fact that if this gets onto the ballot and gets approved by our voters, this council and future councils uh as as early as next year will have to grapple with, how do we fill uh at a minimum a twenty-eight million dollar gap? That does not include the pension escalations that Councilmember Harris talked about, uh, nor does it account for the homeless initiative. So I think, you know, it's, I've said this before uh twice, I think, in open session. We can do anything you want. We just can't do everything and putting this on on the ballot and getting it approved will force uh the discussion about council priorities. And and so I, people just need to have their eyes open to to say that, you know, we we have a lot of great programs. Homelessness, we got uh the environment, the climate, all these things. Uh, come, like I said, uh effective fiscal year twenty-four, we will have at a minimum a twenty-eight million dollar deficit that will grow to over fifty million dollars yeah uh by F Y twenty-seven. So I am concerned about it, but i- it is all a function of council priorities. And so at some point, I will be coming forward with the staff to say, what programs and services do you want to cut in order to facilitate this? So.
Well, well, it it I'm not, I'm I'm hesitant to get in an argument with my, with our great city manager here. But there is also, let's be honest, every single year I've been a member of this city council, at mid-year, there has been significant additional dollars. Now, uh, I know that there are some economic headwinds here. Uh, most experts I talked to, they version of some kind is fifty fifty, but not the kind of recession that we've dealt with where we have significant reserves. We've done very well fiscally through um through the uh COVID period, which could have been catastrophic. And so, you know.
Mayor, I actually have the floor and I'd like to continue my testimony and you can refuse it at the end.
I I just, I go ahead, go right ahead. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
The fact of the matter is, this tax lockbox will leave a council, this council and future councils with their hands tied for a certain partition of money and it's a bad precedent to set. When when we crafted the arguments against Measure G and it was signed by Larry Carr, myself, Angelique Gashby and Mayor, you reviewed it. The last thing we said is ballots, budgets are a balancing act. Funding nonprofits in perpetuity is not in the best interest of anyone in our city, including our youth. And is it necessary? Currently, seven point five percent of our city's funds are spent spent on youth services and nonprofits that support youth forward programming. All of the, all of the arguments that we put into the opposition of Measure G, they all still apply. They all still apply. And in fact, we spend more today than we did in twenty twenty on youth forward projects. Angelique is correct. We we can't maintain our parks. This council has not made it a priority. Parks are extremely youth facing and our parks are falling apart, quite frankly. You know, over a hundred million dollars of unfunded repairs. Uh, I asked for three million bucks for parks repairs at mid-year, was not forthcoming. Now let's talk about the mid-year carryover. In my time on the council, it just ranged from three million in the in the Kevin Johnson years up to twenty-seven million dollars last year. We had a great tax boom. But look, with this contraction that we're facing and inflation, our transfer tax is going to suffer a lot. Uh, property values will go down. People will feel the squeeze. Now more than ever, looking at our projections, and I know that a lot of you are cynical about our finance team and the red ink that they've shown you because we have had mid-year money. But if you take ten million dollars out of that pot every year, some years it'll be negative. And maybe if we get a really big tax boom like we did last year, which happened largely because of real estate and pent up sales demands because of the pandemic, when those things arose, we're not going to have mid-year money to spend on anything. And uh, you know, if I was on the council, next mid-year, probably if this passes, I would not be able to ask for any money for climate projects or parks maintenance. It just simply won't be there. So if you think that you can pass this and not have to cut something else, I feel that you're not being realistic and you're not being fiscally prudent and you're not being good students uh stewards of taxpayer money. I, you know, I oppose Measure Y. I oppose Measure G. The voters voted them down because they understood these arguments. Uh, obviously, this council's going to put it on the ballot. But as I have before, I will fight this because I think it's fiscally irresponsible and I will not leave my seats on this council knowing that I voted to put our city in a worse fiscal condition than it was when I got here. I just won't do it and I hope my colleagues won't either.
Mayor. Thank, thank, thank you, Councilmember.
Can can I just add one quick thing? I I want to make it clear. I'm not opposed to this. I think it's a very worthy cause. I I'm really saying that it is really going to be a function, as I mentioned earlier, of priorities. Uh, right now, if you take a look at the budget we just approved, you all approved, in four of the five years, it's red ink. And that takes into account all of the cannabis revenue uh that we're projecting over the five year period. So it will in fact be taking ten to, I think, ten plus million dollars out of those projections and adding to the red ink. It's, yeah, it's not insurmountable. It is just, we just need to focus. And if the council says this is the priority, then this is the priority.
Then.
And they can make those priorities, city manager, without doing a tax lockbox.
That, that's correct. So I'll I'll leave it at that, Mayor.
So alive here. Yeah, you guys, it's good. It's a very important and good discussion and we thank, and thank you. So what it's, what it's about here is we get to argue about values and priorities here in public. Um, it's good. Councilmember Jennings, you're going to have maybe the last word unless any uh Councilmember Vang or Shanier want to close. I do want to ask Councilmember Shanier, but before I turn it over or Councilmember Vang, whoever made the motion, to add sections two and three to your motion and to designate, talked about this Councilmember Vang as the uh a- as the member presuming this passes, um, and she votes yes to uh help choose the uh the the signers in support.
I'll make that, yeah, I'll add that to it, Mayor.
Add that to the motion, Councilmember Shaniers. You'll second that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so Councilmember Jennings, and I'm going to give you, you may have the last word here, sir, and then we're going to vote.
Mayor, as a courtesy, is the council going to give Councilmember Harris the authorship of the no as a courtesy?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course. If if that's, uh, of course, that not 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 intended oversight there. Councilmembers would like the ownership of the no, that's that's appropriate. So why don't we make that part of the motion as well? Councilmember Vang anticipating the vote. Is that all right?
I gladly accept it, Mayor.
Okay, yes, uh, and Councilmember Shanier will second that second amendment, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good, good. Councilmember Jennings, go, go.
Thank you, thank you. I'll be quick. We've had a long night and a long, a great conversation. I've heard all my colleagues speak on this matter, so I will try to be as brief as possible. I I do want to thank uh Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Shanier and the Sacramento Kids First Coalition for their presentation. Uh, it was incredible. I mean, when you take a look at the vision that they showed us, the goals, the details, the transparency, the metrics and the analysis, they really put on a first class um presentation and I deeply appreciate that. Uh, I'm going to be voting tonight to move this forward. Um, I I I the, I heard one of the students say uh something that just hit me like a rock and she said, um, don't just be about it. Don't just talk about it, be about it. And and, you know, we've done a lot of talking. Uh, I've been in the, in the work of working with youth since nineteen ninety-two in the nonprofit world. And I try to be more than just about talk. I try to be about it and do the work that makes the impact. But the reason that I'm voting for this tonight is that we never have enough resources to really make the impact that we need to make. And those resources aren't consistent enough for us to be able to show metrics over a period of time that show the kind of results that we're all looking for. So I'm going to go for this because I don't want to just talk about it. I want to be about it. I want to make sure we have the resources to be able to help our kids. And I, and I, I believe in the philosophy that time is always right to do what is right. And to me, now that the changes have been made that we've already talked about, the time is right, right now, to do what's right, which is to move this forward and let the people have the opportunity to speak to it. So, um, I want all of us to help our young people to be able to reach the full potential that they have in life. I want to help break the negative generational curses. I want us to help them discover the world around them outside of their four corners. I want to make sure that we all become champions and leaders for our youth and show them that we value them, even the least among them, that we value them and that uh we're going to do everything we can to help them get to that potential and take over this great. And that, uh, we're going to do everything we can to help them get to that potential and take over this great Sacramento region. So that it does not continue to be where it is today. But we are not fighting for resources, we're fighting for the full potential of every person that we, uh, come across. So I'm a, I'm a big fan of this. I, we had a conversation about the workforce. And Councilmember Garrett, I really appreciate your conversation about that. When we talk about the age range and and I just want to be clear, we're going up to twenty five. Is that correct?
Yeah, under twenty five.
Under twenty five. And so when we talk about going under twenty five, we are talking about people moving into the workforce. And so that, to me, was just a given. And when I think about that, I think about internships, I think about partnerships. Collaborations, coalitions, partnerships with high schools that we could be doing. Uh, and I know all of us have a high school in our district, um, that we could be working with, uh, in order to kind of create some of these. Workforce training programs. Um, but I want to try to solve the problem of lack of program consistency. And lack of summer programs and lack of programs for arts and sports and STEM and STEAM and. Mentors and all those things that are out there that can help our kids to reach their full potential. And I've heard it over and over again. This is my last comment. I've heard it over and over again that each and every one of us. Somebody crossed our path in order for us to be where we are today. We got to make sure that we're doing that for all the kids out there that don't have that somebody who's crossing their path. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this tonight. I think you guys have done a great job of addressing issues that we've had in the past. Um, I think this, the time is right, and I'm convinced that the people will support it and vote for it in November. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Last word belongs to Monica. Then we will vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say first and foremost that I have noted all of the comments and the feedback. That was given by the council members. I obviously, you know, as a Sacramento native, I don't take it lightly when folks say that we should prioritize the kids most impacted by. Poverty, violence and trauma. My family was one of those families. Um, I also just want to highlight Councilmember Ashby's comment about funding youth all across the city. Because as a person who has worked, you know, in my adult years with affluent youth, youth that are coming from, you know, high income families. Those youth also do have mental wellness issues, um, and I recognize that. So I just want to speak to that as well. Um, councilmembers, mayor, you know, SAC Kids First has worked on these efforts for many years. We're coming to you once more, um, because we really believe that our youth deserve to be funded now, not later. Um, not a couple of years from now, not when there are new city council members, uh, you know, we, we really believe that this is the council to do it. We ask that you place our proposal for a measure, um, for a Sacramento Children's Fund on the ballot and let the voters decide. Again, uh, you know, we, we hope to count on your support today. Um, I really just appreciate the efforts of of Councilmember Jay Shenier, Councilmember Myvane. And Mayor, we're happy to have you on our side this time around. Um, I really appreciate you. And, uh, with that, I'll, I'll close it out and. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Let's call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion by Councilmember Vang and seconded by Shenir. The argument and support will be authored by Councilmember Vang and the argument in opposition will be authored by Councilmember Harris. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenir.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem Gata.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Congratulations, SAC Kids First. I think we got our five votes already. Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, that passes eight to one on the November. Um, thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you. Um, I'm going to turn the rest of the meeting over to Vice Mayor Ashby and, uh. We'll see you all soon. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're almost done. Let's call item twenty seven.
Item twenty seven is the city auditor's report on wide open walls and David Saban Events Incorporated.
All right, Mr. Osagura, give us the executive summary of this audit, please.
Okay, um, good evening, Vice Mayor, uh, Ashby and members of the city council, Jorge Seguera, your city auditor. The recommendation that is before you is to first pass a motion by two thirds vote. To temporarily suspend council rules and procedures to bypass the Budget Nautic Committee. And then to approve the city auditor's report, uh, titled executing a contract with the wrong entity. And awarding funding without written agreements compromise the city's ability to audit wide open walls and David Saban events.
So moved, Vice Mayor.
Please.
Moved by Councilmember Valenzuela. Was there a second? Okay, Councilmember Vang seconded. All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, so making today's presentation is Farishta Arari.
She has to take the vote first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. So this is a motion to, um, temporarily suspend the council rules and procedure.
Yes.
Um, and Vice Mayor, will you reiterate who made the motion in the second, please?
Councilmember Valenzuela made the motion and Councilmember Vang made the second.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenir.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent. The motion passes.
Go ahead, uh, Jorge.
All right. So making today's presentation is Farishta Arari, who was primarily responsible for completing the project. Farishta, if you can make it brief, I think everyone would appreciate it.
Take us through it quick, Farishta, but we do want to hear it. I appreciate it.
So, um, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Farishta Arari. I'm a principal fiscal policy analyst in the office of the city auditor. Um, with us as well with Bishop Val Jackson, who assisted in completing the project. Um, I will try to go very quick through my presentation. Uh, so the city regularly awards funding to third party organizations that provide services to residents. Uh, these funding arrangements may be memorialized in the form of grants, sponsorships or service contracts. Sorry. In May twenty twenty, we received a complaint that third party vendors Wide Open Walls and David Saban Events. Had allegedly mismanaged and mishandled funds provided by the city. Uh, representatives of WOW and DSC, uh, disputed the allegations. However, due to the seriousness of the allegations, uh, the city council approved an audit of WOW and DSC to assess if. Uh, there was any evidence of misappropriation of city funds. Um, so in June twenty twenty, we initiated our audit and the scope was included assessing the use of city funds awarded to WOW and DSC. And determining whether or not they were appropriately spent. Um, however, we did encounter some scope limitations that I'll quickly review. Um, so David Saban Events, uh, received a hundred and five thousand dollars in payments. Um, from the city between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty mostly related to, uh, the Wide Open Walls Festival. And if you can see, I highlighted fifty thousand dollars grant, um, was. Uh, given to DSC, but it was transferred into WOW's bank account and spent by WOW. Uh, which contributed to our scope limitation that I will discuss in a minute. Um, in payments to Wide Open Walls, we had, uh, sixty, over sixty thousand dollars in payments. And services and, um, most of it were to twenty five thousand dollars sponsorships. Uh, that were provided to WOW with no contracts. Um, so in light of the fact that the city didn't have a written agreement with WOW. Um, the actual service provider for funds that were provided to DSC or written agreements for the WOW sponsorships. Uh, we weren't actually able to audit whether city funds awarded to DSC and WOW were appropriately spent. Um, and so we disclose this limitation to. Uh, comply with our generally accepted government auditing standards. And as a result of this limitation, oh, we couldn't. Uh, audit WOW or DSC's financial records, so we do not express an opinion on the appropriate use. Of city funds provided to them. This audit, um, has, uh, does still have a finding. Um, it's in order to communicate our lessons learned from this exercise. Um, so the report focuses primarily on the city's internal processes. And how they can be strengthened to better position the city to conduct future audits of funding recipients. So basically, um, our two self findings are that the city executed that contract with DSC. When WOW was the actual service provider and, um, that WOW received twenty five thousand dollars. To awards of twenty five thousand dollars, um, without written agreements. I'm just going to skip over some of these because that's basically the gist of it. Um, but we do also want to note that there are other instances where we did have sponsorship agreements. With other organizations, for example, the Sacramento Kings. And although there is not a citywide, um, policy for sponsorships. In twenty ten, the Department of Parks and Recreation, uh, uh, had brought forward a. Item to the city council that was approved for their, uh, community sponsorship initiative that requires. Sponsorships to have, uh, written contracts. And then we also have a new grant distribution policy, but it does not, um, go into detail or include sponsorships. And then last, I do want to note that, uh, although the city didn't have the contracts with WOW in place. It appears that WOW did provide the services that it set out to do because we know that there are various. Places on the, on Del Paso Boulevard, um, where there were murals that are painted. We made one recommendation, um, in this audit. Uh, and that was to update the grant distribution policy to clarify that sponsorships. Should also have written agreements documenting the intended use of city funds, uh, the requirements for recipients. To document the appropriate use of funds and expectations that such records will be made available to assess compliance in a timely manner. Hopefully that was quick enough for you. Um, we do, uh, want to thank the city manager's office, the attorney's office. Wide Open Walls and David Saban Events for their time and assistance in completing this project. We're available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for abbreviating your presentation as well. Jorge, are you still there?
Ye- yes, I'm here.
Do you, uh, want to make any comments there?
I think first, uh, summed it up, uh, pretty well. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, uh, if any of you have any.
Okay, city attorney, did you want to comment?
I know, uh, Vice Mayor, we're good.
Okay, city manager.
No, we're good. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you have any members of the public signed up to speak?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have one caller, phone number four three six six.
Okay.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, this, as I study this situation. This is an example of what I call bid rigging and bid peddling. How in the world do you give money to anyone as much as you fought me? And you don't have any system to justify this audit. I mean. Whatever I do with the cheesecakes, there's always a, a paper trail that's supposed to be there. I mean, this is an example of a sole source, what I call a sole source. There's no, uh, bidding process. Now, here we are, can't get any money from Measure U, which I voted for twice. Or ARPA funding, and then I look at a situation like this. And this just adds fuel to my, uh, purpose on what I'm pursuing. I mean, they made a big thing about to the bay and back getting four thousand dollars, and we had to go through criteria. To get this con- that, those are peanuts to me. And so, uh, if this is a true audit. Then you should be able to fol- follow who signed off on this and whoever signed off on this should be terminated. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Madam Clerk, uh, we have one member of the council would like to speak, and then another week got at least one. E-comment that I wanted to at least say out loud, and that is to our city staff. One e-comment was a request that Wide Open Walls be designated citywide, which it is and should be. All right, Councilmember Harris.
Well, I just want to say, we just had a long, uh, conversation about fiscal responsibility, at least from my point of view. And here is a situation where the city dropped the ball. We can't be putting out money to people that we haven't even contracted. I, I know that our city team gets it. Uh, this is a little bit of a black eye and we have to and will do better in the future.
Agreed. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I don't see anybody else chimed up. I'm sure we all feel the same. Just have to fix that process. Some room for improvement. Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, what do you need from us? We've already taken the vote on this item and accepted the report.
Um, I would like, uh, ask Mr. Osagura if he wants to reap, um, a vote on item number two, which is approving the city auditor's report.
Yes, please.
Second by Councilmember Valenzuela.
Second by Harris.
Second by Councilmember Harris.
Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenir.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenir.
Um, Madam.
Councilmember, I, Councilmember Garrett.
Wait, hold on, hold on. We, I think we have her back. Mindy, are you there?
I am.
Okay, you, 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 you left out, wait, nope, you left off with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Did I? I'm sorry.
Let's start from there. Yeah.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenir.
Hi.
Councilmember Gata.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent, and the motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Mindy. I, we have several items that are just information. We don't need to go through them, but do you have, uh, commission appointments?
I do, thank you. Um, I have three commission appointments to the board, um, to the Sacramento Youth Commission. I have Adavev, Raprari, Sage Urban, Ainsley Fong and Kyla Hutt. To the Preservation Commission, I have Joshua Montemore and Garrett Root. And to the Sacramento Disabilities Advisory Commission, I have Brandy Tuzon Boyd, Musame Kruli and Sophia Neal. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, let's see. My colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Harris, go for it.
Yeah, I would just like to point out that we have screen on the green at Ninjas Park this Saturday night. At probably about eight o'clock, as soon as it gets dark enough to project onto a screen. Uh, we've got a kids, uh, facing movie. Uh, we actually just had to change the title, but, um. So I'm not sure what it is, but I'm sure it'll be a heck of a lot of fun. It's Pixar film. And I'm looking forward to the greenhouse kids getting real benefit right across the street. I think we're going to have a great time. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Vang, what you got?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I just have, um, one request and then two community events. Uh, first, I'd just like to request, uh, that our city attorney and also, um, our city manager, if possible, bring a TOT item to council. Uh, for a vote. Uh, both the mayor and I have been working closely with the city attorney to bring to council a potential, uh, technical amendment to the TOT tax. And just really want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Susannah for her hard work, um, her heart and her hustle, uh, but wanted to make that request, uh, on record. Uh, it's true, uh, Councilmember Vang, I think when the mayor first mentioned it, uh, back in the state of the city, we started working on it to have it ready to go. In the event, it was, uh, there was a request for it to bring it forward, so we'll have that ready, uh, likely, uh, Tuesday. I mean, for you to look at on Tuesday. Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, and then Vice Mayor, just two events, uh, just wanted to announce that we're having concert in the park at Valley High Park on July thirtieth. From five to eight thirty. It's a super fun, family friendly event. Um, we're featuring a Capital City Band, really inviting the public and everyone to join us. There's going to be lots of resources, information booth, face painting, rock wall, um, Team Heart and Hustle will be there. It'll be lots of fun. And so really encouraging all of you to join us. And then, um, just wanted to announce again, you know, every Monday I do our senior walk program at the Pennell Community Center. Uh, but the Pennell Center is not the only location where this. Uh, but the Pennell Center is not the only location where this is happening. It's happening throughout the city. Uh, but really encouraging all of you, uh, every Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays at nine AM. If you're in the south area, stop by the Pennell Center and come walk, uh, with our amazing seniors. And if you're not a senior, that's okay too. Just come join us anyways. Um, it's lots of fun. It's a great way to kick off your Monday. I do that every Monday with our seniors. That's it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Gera?
Uh, um, Madam Vice Mayor, I've got an adjourned memory, so I'll go last.
Okay, come back to you then. Councilmember Jennings, what you got going on? Trucks and such?
The, the, no, no, no. We have, uh, the Return of the Pocket Four, Fourth of July Parade that just took place last week was a huge success. Did I mention huge, like?
It was massive.
Huge. That's right, you were there. So I want to thank everybody who made it possible, including our amazing volunteers, participants, city employees, and all of the attendees and, and vendors and, and floats and all of those. Look forward to seeing you all next year. It's gonna be bigger and better. We're gonna have the festival back next year, which we didn't do this year, but it's gonna be bigger and better, so. Uh, all the, the D seven, uh, constituents just were so happy that we brought it back, and so we were glad to make it happen. And then we want you to come out every Saturday for the Farmer's Market that's taking place at the Elks Lodge, which is at sixty-four forty-six Riverside Boulevard. They've got produce, bread, flour, flowers, and a whole lot more that's out there. It runs every Saturday from eight AM into noon, and you know, they got lots of parking available at the, uh, Elks Lodge. And then the last thing is Jazz in July. We had a great concert last Friday. We've got another one coming up this Friday. It's from six to eight PM. And it's gonna take place at the Belle Coolidge Park. It's gonna feature Virginia Ayers Dawson, who's an incredible soloist and singer with her Airplay Band. So you gotta come on and check it, check it out. It'll all start at six PM and it'll go until eight. And of course, we got the food trucks out there as well. That's it for D seven.
That's a lot. All right. Good stuff, Councilmember Jennings. Uh, Councilmember Schneer?
Thank you. Um, two things. One is we do have a movie night Saturday night at Chorley Park. And I believe it's a canto, uh, will be the movie. The other thing I want to say is, uh, the city is losing someone. I believe today is Christina Palone's last day. And Christina had, I, I don't know how they're gonna find like six, seven, or eight people to replace Christina. And I'm hoping she's still up there, and if not, I hope somebody could let her know that the entire council wishes her well. She will be sorely missed. She was really developing so much of our workforce development, cared deeply about young people. Um, I could go on and on, and I know that there's a party soon that, so people will go on and on, and I won't, but Christina, we will miss you dearly. We will miss the work that you've done. We will miss how much you care about your community and the kids that you take care of and, and what you are trying to achieve. Um, I know where you're going for this new job. Uh, I've already told them they are incredibly lucky, uh, and fortunate to be getting you. Um, and I know that you will do well there. So congratulations on the new job, and, uh, we're sorry you're leaving.
She is an absolute superstar. You're right about that, impossible to replace. Councilmember Jennings, did you put your hand back up? You got something else?
O- only because I made a mistake. I was in such a rush to get through the free jazz concert that this week, this Friday, is gonna take place at Marriott Park. Then we're gonna go to Belle Coolidge Park the following Friday with Virginia Ayers Dawson. But if you want to hear Joe Maza Fiero, his quintet, that's gonna take place this Friday at Marriott Park. Some six to eight PM for both of them.
Okay, so you got one this weekend and one next weekend. First Marriott, then Elks Lodge.
Absolutely. We're talking about Jazz in July. We gotta have one every week.
Great. That sounds fun. Okay, that's all I have for, uh, council members. Councilmember, me, Mayor Pro Tem Gary, you want to do your, you want me to come back after public comments?
No, no, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll do the adjourned memory now, and if you don't mind adjourned memory after, when we, when you adjourn, after the last comment. Um, uh, you know, uh, first, a couple announcements. First, uh, uh, big thank you to Christina Palone. Big thank you for all the work you do on SADA, Aggie Square. Everything we're doing with the California Mobility Center, the Green Economy Initiatives. I could go on and on. I remember meeting you the, for the first time at, um, at a movie night at Tahoe Park. And right during this time in the summer, and so, uh, I remember, uh, you coming out and helping out our, our, our neighbor, our Neighborhood Action Team there. Uh, so definitely will be missed. I'm so happy about your success moving forward. So thank you, Christina, for all your work and excited to, to watch your success in the future. Uh, also, I wanted to, uh, remind folks that our office hours, fourth Friday of every month, is at Food Trucks at Tahoe Park. Will be there from, uh, five till seven, uh, but the, the, the activity goes on even later, so. Uh, we'll have our team out there, uh, answering questions, constituent services, so please come out this Friday to Tahoe Park. Uh, Madam, uh, Vice Mayor, I, uh, I'm, I'd like to adjourn in memory today. Uh, the people of Sacramento suffered a tremendous, tremendous loss with the passing of Ms. Lillian Louise Towns. And Ms. Towns, as everybody knew her, over, uh, in, uh, at the George Simp Community Center, uh, passed away June thirtieth. Uh, and, um, she was originally from Arkansas, uh, but came here, born in nineteen twenty-nine. She was ninety-two when she passed. Uh, she moved out here with her two sons in, uh, nineteen sixty-nine. Um, and, uh, every, ever since I've known her, she had more energy than anybody I knew out in that community. She was out there at every event, making sure that people were taken care of, that were being fed. Uh, always was out there making sure that we don't forget the history of our community.
Did you find a place to move it?
And, uh, hey, Jay, do you mind?
Where is it?
Hold on one second, Councilor Gera. Uh, Councilor Schneer, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you. All right, sorry, Councilmember Gera.
No, 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 thank you.
Sounds like a treasure. Tell us more.
Yes, and so Ms. Towns, you know, she was critical because everything we did at the George Simp Community Center, uh, she was active in neighborhood engagement. She, uh, helped us put together the Avondale and Glen Elder Neighborhood Association. A, a couple of things that people don't know about Ms. Towns is that she also was very active in the Alzheimer Association and the Leuk- Leukemia Society. She was part of the first, she was the first black female manager of Sacramento's, uh, Bears Pop Warner Youth League, uh, football team. Uh, and also, uh, engaged in the Black Americans Against Cancer, the Pac Bill Future Pioneers, Hiram Johnson's, uh, Schools Booster Club, and the founder of the University of California Davis, one of the founders of the University of California Davis Booster Clubs. Uh, she was, uh, an amazing woman with so much energy. And she never, uh, you know, uh, minced any words too. She always knew, uh, how to get ahold of her council member and make sure that they were focused in their neighborhood, uh, everything from ne- the neighborhood investments and, uh, for the community. To even if she's a code enforcement, she knew, she knew how to get engaged. So, uh, Lillian, uh, Mrs. Towns, I can't call her Lily, Mrs. Towns, uh, is survived by her two sons, uh, Michael Towns, uh, and also Dwayne Towns, and uh, there'll be a funeral service tomorrow at New Hope Baptist Church on Thirty-second Ave. And, uh, you know, for the community there, we'll be, we'll be at the George Simp Community Center. Her pride and joy of the community, always going out there afterwards for a service. Uh, you can't speak enough of, about, of the, a big loss to the Avondale Glen Elder, Elder Neighborhood Association and the city of Sacramento. Uh, ma- um, you know, uh, Madam Vice Mayor, once the, uh, when it's appropriate, I hope you can adjourn, uh, on behalf of Ms. Lillian Towns.
Sounds like an absolute treasure. Mayor Pro Tem Gary did her justice with your nice tribute there. Thank you for, for talking to us a little bit about her. Uh, colleagues, we have four folks from the public signed up to speak, so we'll hear from them quickly, and then we will adjourn in honor of Ms. Townsend and, uh, see each other soon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our first speaker is a phone number four three six six, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, first of all, I would like to say to, uh, Pro Tem, uh, Gera, that's a wonderful acknowledgement of a wonderful human being. Uh, I knew her through my mother. And this lady who was just, uh, we just, uh, buried, who was a hundred and eight years young, and I know for a fact they knew each other, so. It's, it's wonderful when you acknowledge the elders, especially when they came from the deep south. Jim Crow, white only, colored only, these wonderful people you're talking about came to Sacramento to get away from that. And so that's why I fight like I do when I see that type of injustice. Now, what I wanted to also say is that, um, yeah, I wish the mayor was here, but I'm sure his staff will, will hear this. Um, I believe that, uh, on the agenda, I keep seeing the city manager's report. But I never hear the city manager's report. I think it should be removed from the agenda unless it's gonna be reality. That's a waste of time and paper to have city managers report at the very bottom, but i- I never hear a report. The other thing I want to say is that I want to thank whomever did it. I, I'm not sure who did it, but the grant pool with my persistence. Uh, had, I have been told that the pool is open. Uh, they've told me there's peculiar hours, it's closed on the weekend. Who wouldn't want to go swimming on the weekend? But it's the start, so whoever did that, you know, I appreciate that. Um, the Grant Drumline, I, I have heard through the grapevine that, uh, they did very well. Uh, in New York and, and Washington DC. I haven't heard from the director, so I'll leave that open. And, um, that's a wonderful thing they did. And all of the people, and you know who you are, and some of you know who you, who didn't help them. You know who you are.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Ergera, for your recognition of Mrs. Townsend. Albeit, I don't remember meeting her, but I know I have because I played football with her son, Dwayne. Uh, uh, DT and I played on a, um, undefeated national championship football team. And the love and support of his mom, uh, yelling from the stands, uh, was there. And a- again, it's just, uh, well, it's been quite a few years, uh, uh, from back in the day. But I do thank you for recognize, recognizing Mrs. Townsend. And, um, with that, I send out my thoughts and prayers to, uh, Dee and family. Thank you again for the recognition, uh, Mr. Gera.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Chai Meng Vang.
Before I start, um, this, is this a public, uh, comment?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Um, so, um, hello, councilmembers and, uh, everyone. I hope y'all have been doing well. Uh, my name is Chai Meng Vang, and I'm a Sacramento State student and a longtime volunteer for, um, Mong Youth and Parents United, or like, uh, HIPO. Uh, HIPO is a nonprofit organization that, you know, have worked by offering, uh, services and job opportunities and programs in the North Sacramento community. You know, I myself, I came to, to the United States, um, in two thousand and four as a home refugee. And I've grown up, I didn't have many opportunities, um, getting involved with HIPO. You know, I see that, you know, they have served the community by opening many doors and opportunities for not only youth, but, you know, parents and elders as well. You know, HIPO's, uh, efforts to support the community has been impactful as they are creating events, um, such as youth pop-ups and, uh, you know, keeping, uh, youths off the streets. You know, they're building student leaders and bringing the community together. Uh, many people, especially youths, are able to connect, grow, and learn, uh, through the youth pop-ups that, you know, has been held. You know, our youths and their futures are important. Uh, we should definitely invest into our youths, and I hope that everyone could support, you know, uh, you know, um, support, you know, youths and their futures. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, all the nonprofit organizations, uh, that continue to work and, uh, create success within our youths. I just want to thank HIPO and eBay C, along with, you know, our councilmembers who continues to support, you know, youth and their success. Uh, I just want to thank you all for listening to my comment, and I hope everyone can take care and have a wonderful rest of your day.
Great job with your comments.
Next speaker is Michael Lynch.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Michael Lynch. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Improve Your Tomorrow, a youth-serving organization dedicated to closing the college opportunity gap for young women of color. We do this work through a wraparound model with pop-ups as one of our strategic priorities to positively engage at-promised young people, monthly gatherings focused on positive youth development. Pop-ups have been a crucial part of our work, creating stability, work opportunities, mentoring, and family support. Pop-ups, created out of a concern for youth violence, have proven to be a successful path for youth, giving thousands a chance for stability and success. We understand the plan is to run pop-ups later through the city, but that is a highly successful collaborative built through the Sierra Health Foundation and leads thousands of youth without any activities or support this summer. Ending the program on July first without warning has left multiple organizations unable to support youth this summer. I strongly consider the council to reinstate popular funding to the Sierra Health Foundation and continue to enable organizations like Improve Your Tomorrow to positively impact young people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Catherine Webb.
My name is Katie Webb, and I'm the community organizer with Three Fifty Sacramento. I am very disappointed by this council's ongoing failure to prioritize climate action in our city. It is appalling that the city's climate action and adaptation plan is already over a year and a half behind schedule. During the recent budget hearings, council specifically declined to provide additional staff to ensure that the city could finally release a plan and begin implementation. In fact, the Budget Committee proudly announced that the city manager had committed to producing the draft climate action plan by July first. But even that did not happen. Instead, the city issued half a draft, leaving out the entire portion on adaptation to the extreme heat and unhealthy air that we are already experiencing, which is especially important to our underserved communities. I work on distributing air filters to the Sacramento area, but this is a Band-Aid solution to a systemic issue that our elected officials must address. Nor does the document provide any concrete steps or plans to secure funding or financing for implementation. Why is it that council and staff continue to find creative ways to fund big initiatives like a children's fund? But when it comes to climate, all we hear is there is no money. Why does council fail to realize that our children's future relies on us fighting climate change? You can fund children's soccer, but one day there won't even be any grass to play on, unless we act now. Why are our leaders enabling a developer-led ballot initiative that will put meeting our climate goals in jeopardy? When will the city stop kicking the climate action can down the road? We urge you, mayor and council, to hold yourselves and staff accountable. It is time to release a full draft, including a meaningful plan and timeline for providing the necessary staffing and funding for implementation. The city is so far behind. Please start taking this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daryl Roberts. Daryl Roberts, if you'll unmute.
I am. Thank you very much. Um, Vice Mayor, um, city manager, members of the council. Um, Daryl Roberts, again, co-founder of Roberts Land Development Center. Um, it is interesting to hear the last speaker talk about climate action and climate change, as it is one of the tenets of our social action of, uh, our Freedom School Summer Program that's impacting more than five hundred youths living in District Seven, District Five, uh, District Eight, uh, District Two, District One, and District Three, and District Four. Um, those students have for the last five weeks, and in some cases will be for the next three weeks, participating in a project which the Children's Defense Fund, uh, originally started in nineteen ninety-one. And we have, uh, for the last eight years carried on the legacy of Dr. Marion Wright Edelman through our work here at Roberts Land Development Center. Um, I'm happy to report that it has had, uh, documented success, data-driven success, as well as data-driven, um, research-based approaches that are deemed effective. One of the things that became a spin-off of Freedom School was our weekend pop-ups. This past weekend, we, we put on another pop-up. This time, I think it was a foothill skate. Uh, sixty to eighty students, ten, uh, staff members between ages of eighteen and twenty-five students, between ages of thirteen and eighteen. Um, had a fun time, a safe time, and had a, had a great evening. Um, we are one of the few, uh, community-based organizations that are still able to hold pop-ups, um, funded by ourselves or with other partners. Um, because on July first, the city manager, or June thirtieth, the city manager removed the contract for pop-ups. My hope is that you will reconsider that decision, you will override the city manager's decision, and have a real conversation about what is effective approaches for coming our youth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I belong to Sacramento Homeless Organizer Committee and Sacramento Tenant Union. Uh, have you seen our point time count? I mean, this Sacramento City Council is failing the people in Sacramento when it comes to housing and homeless issues. We're saying more people gonna be evicted, more homeless population in Sacramento. We've got more homeless people than San Francisco right now. What are you gonna do about it? What are you gonna do about it? I mean, most of you don't come to uh any of the meetings that the Housing Shack or Sacramento Tenancy uh at, brought to. I mean, Sacramento City Council right now, for the most part, except one or two exceptions, is a joke and should be replaced. And also, uh, if you're in a Sacramento City Council, you're a City Council member, you have got to stay in the meeting unless it's an emergency or you don't see any business. What Mayor Steinberg did earlier today should not happen. No, a City Council member should leave early for any reason unless it's a real emergency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and our final speaker is Bethany. Bethany, if you'll unmute. Our final speaker is Bethany. Bethany, if you'll unmute.
Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you for giving that a third try. Um, sorry, Bethany, couldn't get you connected there. All right, colleagues, it's been a long day. Thank you for your commitment and dedication to the city, even through some really tough discussions today. Just a quick reminder, the mayor announced this on the front of the meeting, but just to make sure people know, this council's gonna come back in person the first meeting in August, and then we will welcome the community back the following week with fifty percent occupancy in the council chambers, asking households to sit a seat or two apart and requiring masks in the chamber. So we all have that to look forward to in August, and then at uh Mayor Pro Tem Gera's request, we will close this meeting in honor of Lillian Louise Towns, an absolute powerhouse out of District Six who will be missed. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.